We're waiting for OCTV.
We're not ready.
It's 5:30.
Okay, I'm ready.
We're fine.
Okay. It's 5:31.
You can just hand them to Colleen and she'll pass them out there.
Do whatever you tell me to do.
It's a long night. All right. Rise for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yeah, it's there fixed in a minute. Yeah, if you look at the name in a minute, it's there fixed. Okay. Good evening. James, attendance?
Yep. President Dr. Reese.
Present.
Vice President McDonough.
Here.
Secretary Summers here. Treasury Hansler.
Present.
Trustee Schultz.
Here.
Trustee Schaefer.
Here.
And Trustee Whitney.
Here.
All present.
Any changes to the board agenda? I have none. I've gotten none from anybody. All right. We had no scheduled public comment, pre-arranged. And then on to the consent agenda, item number four, for the minutes of the March 21st, 2024, regular meeting. James?
Move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Do I have support? Amanda, any discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, now we're going to move into what the bulk of the evening is tonight, and that's our candidate interviews. Tonight, the first candidate we have will be Dr. Tanya Milligan. And I think they're going to get her. Yeah.
How are you? We're still getting technology set up and stuff, but you're welcome to come up here.
All right, sounds good.
You can sit. Stand completely up to you. We have a microphone over there, so we have a clicker to move forward on some of your stuff.
Is it okay if I sit?
Yeah, perfectly fine.
Okay. Does that mean I'm lazy?
No.
It's okay. It's all good. I brought extra copies from this. If anybody wants it.
Do you have your presentation?
I'm going to email it to Erin right now. Okay. Did you need me to print out a copy of my presentation? No, it didn't. We had some technical issues. I'll say hello. Good to see you. Nice to see you. Good to see you. Good to see you. Oh, goodness. Careful. I'm going down. Thank you. Thanks for having me back. I appreciate it. Good to see you. Hi, good to see you. Thanks for having me back. I appreciate it. Good to see you. You know, beautiful weather. Yes, well, good going on. First time I was here was 70 and sunny. It must be like that all the time. Uh huh, yeah. And then it was 20 to 23 degrees the last time I was here. So, can I offer this to? Yeah, sure. Kelly, would you like?
I have one thing to do.
Okay. I may have overprinted. Okay. And then is there? Okay. I brought a clicker? We have a clicker. Do you have her PowerPoint to put up here as well? Is it not? I swear I have one. No, we saw it. We've seen it. We're just having little technical challenges. Oh, and it's cool. I'm trying to remain timely.
Well, thank you again. We'll go ahead and get it started now that we resolved a little bit of our technical issues. So, thank you and welcome back. We're really happy that you came and spent a day in the district and got to meet lots of individuals and looking forward to your 30, 60, 90-day leadership transition plan. So, I will go ahead and leave it to you now, Dr. Milligan.
Okay, well, good evening, President Reese, Vice President McDonough, and board members. Thank you for having me back and giving me the opportunity to present my 30, 60, 90-day plan. I also want to welcome the parents and community members, both here in the audience and viewing from home. Thank you for taking the time out of your busy schedules to be here. The board graciously invited me to have a day in the district back on March 18th, and it was one of the absolute best educational experiences I have ever had. The statement that you see here that says, "Where the globe is our campus", that really came to life for me during my visit. I had a chance to go in the classrooms and I saw students problem-solving and thinking critically and applying their understandings to a global context throughout their coursework, especially in their IB classes. So, that was really fun to see. I also saw very clearly the love that everyone throughout the district and the community has for their students. When visiting schools and classrooms, I saw high fives, fist bumps, hugs, and adults interacting with children in many positive and supportive ways. It was a joy to see. So, during my day in the district, I had the honor of meeting many amazing people, and I'd like to take the time to thank them for sharing their insights into the district's past and present, as well as their ideas for the future. It was an incredibly jam-packed day, 12 hours to be exact. But I want to make sure I recognize the following people. First of all, Board of Education, for allowing me a full day in your district. It was amazing, absolutely amazing. I had a chance to start my day with the Cabinet Leadership Team and Dr. Markovich, and they were so welcoming and warm and just started my day off perfectly. I then had a chance to meet with community and business leaders at the Oxford Township offices. We had great conversation. They asked amazing questions, so thoughtful, and really had to get my brain moving there. So, that was wonderful to start the day. And I really appreciate Executive Secretary Angela Weaver. She was able to give me quite a bit of information before I got here, so I felt prepared to be able to answer those questions. So, I appreciate Angela for that. And then, of course, I got to go to the schools, which was so fun. So, we started our day off at the Oxford Middle School, so right here, and I met with Principal Bigelow. I had a chance to go to classrooms. I got to see the band room and the kids in the band. I got to visit the choir room and listen to this teacher singing who has a beautiful voice. So, that was really, really fun. We then went to Oxford Elementary School and met with Principal Brown. He showed me around the whole school and showed me the reading bracket, where the students are predicting the next award-winning book. So, it's a competition, like it's not a basketball bracket, it's a reading bracket. It was amazing, so fun. We then went to the Oxford High School, where Principal Beasley showed me around and introduced me to a group of high school student leaders. These kids were absolutely brilliant. The questions they asked me, no offense, but they were harder than the questions you asked me in my interview. Like, they knew all about school board meetings and finances. I don't think I knew what a school board meeting was when I was in high school. So, it was really impressive. So, that was really fun, and I got to have lunch with them. I was a little disappointed that I didn't get to have school lunch. It was a catered lunch, because I'm told that the Wildcat Mash is quite delicious. So, fingers crossed I'll have a chance to eat that. We then went to Daniel Oxford Elementary School, and Principal Boyd showed me around. I got to see students interacting in the classrooms. It's just an amazing school. And then, in tandem, of course, I saw the Oxford Early Learning Center. Okay, adorable. I think I got in trouble for saying cute too many times, because it was amazing. It was so organized, well-thought-out, everything, you know, was planned. It was really incredible. And then, of course, the facility dogs. I had to hug each and every one. I'm amazed I didn't leave with one of those, but I don't think my husband would appreciate that. But it was just a phenomenal opportunity to see the schools and the students and the teachers. It was such a joy. I then had a chance to meet with the Oxford Administrative Team, who took their time after a long day's work to come and talk to me. And, you know, they pulled no punches. They asked some really pointed questions, which I appreciated. And, you know, just spent time just trying to brainstorm what my superintendency might look like. So, that was really fun. We went, and then in the evening, we came back here and had staff and district employees, and we actually circled up and had kind of a restorative circle and had circular dialogue. So, that was really awesome. And clearly, they are very passionate about their work, what they do here in the district. And then, I had a wonderful meal provided by Oxford Food Services. So, thank you for that. I appreciate it. They were sliders. I love sliders. And I met with the union presidents, and that was an amazing group as well, just very thoughtful about their work and their passion for students. And finally, I finished the day, ended my day with the Oxford community and parents, who also asked great questions and provided insight into their hopes for the future of the district. So, it was just an amazing day. So, thank you again for that opportunity. I really appreciate it. Now, finally, I do have one more person I need to thank, which is Pam Beal, the Executive Director of Special Education. She was my taxi. She was my timekeeper, moderator, and made sure I had two very important things, food and coffee. So, thank you to Pam. I appreciate it. And honestly, what was really cool for me is every single location I went to, people talked about working in the district, how much they loved working in Oxford schools, their children going to school here, and some of them had, you know, four, five, six children all throughout the schools, right, levels of schools, and how much they absolutely love being in Oxford. And that's not, you don't get that all the time. So, that was really, I really appreciated that. And it was clear that they put a lot of work into the rigorous education students are getting in the Oxford schools. So, you guys have some really great people and systems here. You should be proud. All right, so, my day in the district themes. I don't know if you're familiar with word clouds. This is a word cloud that shows not only the concepts most referenced in the focus groups highlighted in the leadership profile, but also those that were expressed throughout my day in the district. The three words that were lifted up the most were repair, heal, and rebuild. When discussing these concepts, here's how people tended to use these terms. First, repair. Repair was used in reference to relationships, trust, and confidence in the district leadership to guide the district forward. The term accountability was often used in connection with repair. The second word is heal. People, especially staff, spoke of needing to heal. Many expressed the sentiment that examining any underlying and unresolved hurt experienced by both the school and surrounding community from the tragedy and making amends to address it would go a long way towards healing the community. And finally, the word rebuild. This was often used in reference to the work needed to rebuild connections throughout the community to wrap around and support students thrive academically, socially, and emotionally. Using these concepts, I have created an icon that provides an overall visual of the foundation for my 30, 60, 90-day superintendent plan. So, this visual, there's a couple of components I'd like to point out. First, the hearts represent the unconditional love you have for your students, and the different colors represent the many different ways I saw evidence of that love during my visit. The hearts also refer to the concept of leading with love, which I observed in every school building. The principals clearly had a passion for their work with students and teachers. In this context, I define leading with love to mean approaching leadership, decision-making, and interactions with others from a place of compassion, empathy, kindness, and understanding. It involves prioritizing well-being, growth, and happiness of students, teachers, staff over purely transactional objectives. Leading with love fosters trust, builds stronger relationships, and creates a supportive and inclusive environment where people feel valued, respected, and motivated to contribute their best. Finally, there are the three key words, repair, heal, and rebuild, found in the golden arrow. This symbolizes moving forward as one community as a result of these efforts. The handout that you have, I have extras if people can get one, provides a high-level overview of my 30, 60, 90-day plan and can be used as a reference during this presentation. The intention of the plan is to lay the foundation for a comprehensive and compassionate recovery process while leveraging the community's resilience and resolve to repair, heal, and rebuild a thriving education ecosystem for all Oxford children. In order to return the district's focus to rigorous academics and increased student outcomes, all students, teachers, and staff must feel both physically and psychologically safe. When students feel physically and psychologically safe, they achieve higher academic performance and engage and feel more connected to their schools. And when the adults who support students feel physically and psychologically safe, they are better equipped to able, better equipped and able to give their best to students due to decreased stress, anxiety, and illness. Prior to starting as a superintendent, I would need to be brought up to speed in several areas. This can be accomplished by reviewing the various forms of information listed here, as well as learning from Board of Education meetings and meeting with the current interim superintendent and debriefing with the district leadership team. I know that there has been a tremendous amount of work and investments made to support students, teachers, staff, and families after the tragedy, and I would need to better understand these experiences and efforts in preparation for the role. The first phase of 30-day plan focuses on repairing relationships and determining needs. This phase is important because tragedy and trauma shatters trust and security within the community. Repairing relationships involves acknowledging the trauma and grief experienced by students, staff, parents, and the wider community, and working to rebuild trust and foster an environment where healing can occur. Determining needs is essential to support those most impacted by the tragedy by providing appropriate services vital for their well-being. The first phase of the 30-day plan starts with community engagement. During this part of the plan, I would attend community meetings, events, support groups. I would connect with families, staff, and community members. I could also hold online office hours for families who have difficulty traveling. During these sessions, I would listen actively to every story and understand people's concerns, needs, hopes, their aspirations for moving forward, and financial priorities. The second part of the 30-day plan is stakeholder meetings. The stakeholder meetings would be held to understand the current state of affairs, ongoing initiatives, and immediate challenges. I would hold these meetings with district and building leadership, school board members, teachers, support staff, and finance specialists. I would also conduct one-on-one meetings with key stakeholders to re-establish trust, build rapport, and gather insights. These include, but are not limited to, village council members, business community members, parks and recreation, library services, and local media, to name a few. After reviewing the district recovery plan, I see that a lot of work has gone into the mental health and trauma resources. So, this part would be about reviewing those resources with our local mental health professionals to understand the different, excuse me, the different ways students, teachers, staff, families, and other community members continue to experience and manifest trauma, and how this impacts their well-being and ability to achieve their goals. This would also allow me to assess the current support systems for students, staff, and families and identify immediate needs and possible gaps in mental health services. After reviewing the guidepost review as well as the district recovery plan, I see that a lot of safety measures have been put in place, which is awesome. However, there were multiple places where it said the district will continue to refine and strengthen their safety and security protocols, and that further review would be needed. So, this part of the plan would be to review those protocols and procedures and determine what gaps may exist. I would collaborate with local law enforcement and emergency services to review emergency response protocols, identify preparation protocols to ensure that the district is well-prepared to handle any potential emergencies, and ensure trauma and forward approaches to all emergency practice drills. Finally, I would collaborate with safety teams to identify and resolve any gaps in the district's safety plans, preparation, and practice strategies. The fifth part of the 30-day plan would be establishing a communication plan. First, I would need to assess the current communication plan and modify or develop a transparent and proactive communication plan to keep all stakeholders informed about and involved with ongoing initiatives, progress updates, envisioned changes, and financial planning. I would establish open lines of communication with local media to provide accurate and timely information, as well as local boards and commissions. The second phase would be the 60-day plan that focuses on finding collaborative solutions to repair, heal, and rebuild. Collaborative solutions empower communities to address the multifaceted challenges of repairing, healing, and rebuilding after a tragedy. By harnessing collective strength, resources, expertise, and creativity, collaborative efforts can foster resilience, promote healing, and create safer and more supportive environments for all students and the community who loves them. The first part of this plan is to strategically, is to engage in strategic planning sessions and tap into the valuable insights and experiences that people bring to the table. This would involve an executive review of the current strategic plan and how we can celebrate successes and determine any adjustments needed. We would also review initial assessments and stakeholder feedback. We would align goals and priorities with long-term vision for the district, and we would need to consider alignment with existing systems, processes, and procedures, as well as the accountability measures for these. We would develop a revised budget plan that aligns with the district's educational goals and community priorities and establish a clear roadmap for recovery and growth. We would then do an evaluation of resource allocation and complete a comprehensive financial analysis to identify current budget allocations, expenditures, revenue sources. We would need to prioritize essential programs and services based on input from stakeholders, return on investment data as it pertains to academics and SEL practices, and direct support to student learning, safety, and well-being. We would identify potential areas of overspending, inefficiencies, and possible cost savings, and explore opportunities to increase revenue through grants, partnerships, and fundraising. The third part of this phase would be professional development. We would implement targeted professional development programs for staff to address any gaps in trauma-informed practices and support strategies, any needed specialized training identified during stakeholder meetings, including safety, academics, and restorative practices. We would identify knowledge gaps in district policies, protocols, and practices, and work with the Board Policy Committee to determine if new policies or administrative guidelines are needed or if professional development can address these gaps. I would also establish collaborative partnerships to enhance support services for students and families. These include, and again, are not limited to, local organizations, nonprofits, community leaders, including the Chief of Police and Fire Chief, and leverage both internal and external resources to strengthen the district's recovery efforts. The last part of this phase is continuous feedback loop. This would be feedback from students, parents, teachers, staff, and community members. This would enable us to ensure that the district's response remains adaptive and responsive to evolving needs and regularly assess the effectiveness of implementation initiatives. The third part is the 90-day plan, and the focus is on implementing sustainable solutions. Implementing sustainable solutions is essential for promoting long-term recovery, preventing future incidents, and optimizing resources, building resilience, fostering continued engagement, and ensuring a positive outcome of healing within the community. First, I would implement initiatives and leverage relationships. Now, I have a picture here of a marathon, because it's not a sprint. I'm not doing a marathon, but it is a marathon. It's a long-term commitment for these initiatives, so that's why that picture is there. And these initiatives would be identified during the strategic planning sessions, ensuring that initiatives are aligned with the district's recovery goals and monitoring and adjusting implementation strategies based on that continuous feedback loop. It would also involve data analysis, collecting and analyzing data on student metrics, academic performance, attendance, mental health outcomes, socio-emotional measures. We would evaluate the impact of implementation strategies and use data to inform further adjustments and improvements. The third part of this phase is celebrating successes, one of my favorite parts. This is where you acknowledge the achievements, both big and small, within the districts, and you share success stories with community to build confidence and foster a positive atmosphere. By focusing on celebrating and celebrating success, you increase student and staff morale. You encourage a successful mindset. You build stronger relationships that together we can do hard things. And you recognize strategy effectiveness. strategy effectiveness and provides a mean, means to learn and adapt. When you highlight people's successes, you show your belief in them to do great things, and in turn, they will. The fourth part of this phase is long-term planning. Begin the development of a long-term recovery plan outlining the district's vision for the future and returning our primary focus to academics. Identifying the steps needed to achieve sustained success and engage in strategic discussions with the school board and key stakeholders to ensure the long-term plan is comprehensive and takes a multitude of perspectives and approaches into account. And finally, community unifying events. I understand Beauty and the Beast was attended by over 6,000 community members. That is an amazing event and brings like so much joy. I got a flower from it. Pam gave me a flower. There was just so much pride in that. So having events like that promotes community healing and unity, emphasizes the importance of fostering resilience, and builds a strong support network within the district with the outcomes of strengthening a sense of belonging and a sense of security and support that comes from being accepted, included, and having identity with a group. So prior to implementing my 30, 60, 90-day plan, there would be quite a few considerations I would need to understand and make before implementing the plan. So there are 10 key transition considerations. I had it all set up, and it was fancy that one came in at a time, but you get the whole shebang. Sorry if it overwhelms you. So 10 key transition considerations include assessment and understanding. Before implementing any changes, it is crucial that I fully understand the dynamics, concerns, and needs of both the school district and the community. This involves me actively listening to stakeholders, including students, parents, teachers, and community members, conducting surveys, focus groups, and one-on-one meeting, which can provide me with valuable insight into the current state of affairs and the expectations for leadership. The second is healing and support. I would need to recognize the wounds from such a traumatic event may still be raw for many individuals in the community, and I would need to prioritize healing and supportive initiatives for students, families, and staff. This may involve counseling services, support groups, memorial events, or other activities aimed at fostering a sense of unity and resilience. The third consideration is transparent communication. I must establish open and honest transparent communication channels, which are essential for rebuilding trust and fostering a sense of community. I would keep stakeholders informed about the district's plans, decisions, and progress, and I would be accessible and approachable, welcoming feedback, and addressing concerns in a timely manner. The fourth consideration is community engagement. I will actively engage with the community to involve them in the decision-making process and demonstrate my commitment to collaboration and partnership. This could include town hall meetings, community forums, advisory committees, and other opportunities for dialogue and participation. The fifth consideration is focused on safety and well-being. I will prioritize safety and well-being of students and staff by evaluating the comprehensive safety measures and protocols, which will involve reviewing and updating security procedures, investing in mental health resources, and promoting a culture of inclusivity and respect. The sixth consideration is cultural competence and sensitivity. I will recognize the diverse perspectives and experiences within the community, and I will strive to foster a culture of inclusivity, empathy, and understanding. Cultural competence for staff and leadership can help ensure that the needs of all students and families are being met in a sensitive and respectful manner. The seventh consideration is strategic planning and vision. I will collaborate to develop a strategic plan and vision for the district that reflects the values, aspirations, and priorities of the community, and I will involve stakeholders in the planning process to ensure buy-in and ownership of the goals and objectives. The eighth consideration is empowerment and collaboration. I will empower school leaders, teachers, and staff to contribute their expertise and ideas to improve the district's and support students' success. I will foster a collaborative and supportive work environment where everyone feels valued and respected. The ninth consideration is continuous evaluation and adaptation. I will regularly evaluate the effectiveness of my leadership plan and approach, soliciting feedback from stakeholders to make adjustments as needed. Flexibility and adaptability are key in responding to the evolving needs and challenges of the community. And finally, long-term commitment. I recognize that rebuilding a divided community and school district is a long-term process that requires patience, persistence, and dedication. I will demonstrate my commitment to the well-being and success of the community through my words, decisions, and actions. I conclude by bringing you back to this visual that shows the love of students being central to our work and this plan. We're all here for the success of the students. Everything we say and do impacts students. The high school students I met during my visit told me that they watched the board meetings. I ask you to consider how those meetings affect them. Additionally, I ask you to consider what it might look like if the Oxford community moved forward as one. When a community commits to moving forward as one, they progress together as a unified group with shared goals, values, and purpose. They emphasize collaboration, cooperation, and collective effort towards achieving common objectives rather than focusing solely on an individual interest or agendas. Moving forward as one requires mutual respect, trust, communication, and a commitment to working together harmoniously despite differences or challenges that may arise. My 30, 60, 90-day plan presented here will galvanize the Oxford community and moving forward as one by laying the foundation for a comprehensive and compassionate recovering process while leveraging the community's resilience and resolve to repair, heal, and rebuild a thriving educational ecosystem for all our children. Thank you again for allowing me the opportunity to present my plan, and I'd like to open it up to the board for questions.
Great. Thank you so much. We do have some questions, but we did get started. I just want to let the board know that we started at 5:45 versus 5:30, just to do some of the technical issues. So with that, I will hand it over to Heather for the first question, and then we'll go around and leave some time for you if you have follow-ups for us.
Thank you very much for preparing your presentation. It was great. Describe a time when you maybe introduced a new initiative in your district or were a part of a team that, that brought in a new initiative. Kind of how did you do that? Maybe talk a little bit about the funding, how you got it started.
Absolutely. So I think I mentioned in my first interview, right now, we're revamping our approach to mathematics.
Okay.
In my current school district, the first thing we started with, similar to what I talked about in the plan, is bringing people together who have expertise in math. So that involved teachers, that involved curriculum specialists, that involved district leadership. And essentially, we brainstormed what's going well, what data do we have to demonstrate that that's going well. We talked about what resources are available to support and galvanize that process. So we began that six months ahead of actually formulating the plan. And then we decided, okay, who all needs to be at the table to make sure that this initiative is really powerful, right? It has all the voices who can move this initiative forward. So we invited, I think, about 10 additional people to the table to talk about how we're going to do this, what it's going to look like, what does the funding look like for this, so we can advocate for that funding. So we were able to get a large group together, and we then, from that group, decided, okay, we need a working group to actually like do the work of the math initiatives. And so we had a working group, we have a working group currently that then reports back to the larger group to get more feedback. So from that work, we have a solid math vision now for the district, you know, post-pandemic. We have resources identified that needs, need to be leveraged to uplift the initiative, and we've planned a professional development math summit this summer that all teachers, math teachers, grades four through seven, will attend with their building leadership teams to really dig into the curriculum and make sure they understand the initiative and what that looks like. Thank you for your question.
Thank you for being here. Have you ever participated in professional negotiations? If so, what was your role?
So primarily, my role, working with unions, has to do with being a building principal. We do have administrative members on the negotiation team that I work with as far as giving input and feedback, but I have not been a member of the negotiations team at this point in time.
So with, so how would you prepare yourself for professional negotiations that will be coming up in the next couple of years here in Oxford?
Well, first, I'd need to make sure I understood what the contract currently holds. So I'd need to read them, make sure I understand the parameters to the contract. I'd also need to understand what are people's perspectives, so what people feel strongly about, what are their needs across the board, what they, what they're asking for, and also what's feasible, right? So if somebody, if they're recommending a significant salary raise, but we know that the budget is very challenging over the next few years, that's going to be very difficult to negotiate just because of the, the resources.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Do you have experience with managing multi-sourced foundational allowance grants, et cetera, budgets as far as?
So from a building perspective, so I manage multiple grants. So obviously, title, we had title funds. I also had a school improvement grant. So I had four, I had four different funding sources that I navigated as a building principal. And from a district perspective, we had quite a bit of ESAR funding, so we managed that. That funded a tremendous amount of our curriculum support and staff and student support. So I have, from that standpoint. Now, writing grants, I have written grants before, but that's not a primary part of my role currently.
You kind of already answered, but if you want to add anymore, as far as how would you approach entering into a district that is facing some financial challenges?
Yeah, I had to, I got a chance to look at the dashboard as well as the five-year forecast, and it, it does look challenging. There's, there is a deficit, and you can see that over the five years. And so, as I mentioned during my day in the district, it's going to involve some tough decisions, you know? Everything is, it's, I don't know how you're experiencing it, but we used our ESAR funds to do a lot of really great work. And now that the ESAR funds have concluded, we have to make some tough choices. Like, they're all great. We want to keep everything, but we don't have the resources to do that. So you really have to, you know, as I mentioned in my presentation, you have to look at the district and community priorities. What is really important? What are the things we absolutely cannot let go of? And you have to focus on prioritizing those things, and primarily, things that directly impact students, right? So academics, their well-being, transportation, food, you know, things that are really important. Athletics are also really important, and one of the things I recall in the focus groups is that the community was very proud of the fact that they did not have pay-to-play, right? So that's a really important component. So honestly, it's going to have, you're going to have some tough choices. But I mentioned, you know, as a, someone who manages their personal finances, you have a limit amount of money, you know? So I want to go to Hawaii. I want to have a new vehicle, but my money does not allow it. So what are the things that I can prioritize? And that's the day-to-day things that we need, paying for the electric bill, paying for the gas, paying for gas for my car, my 17-year-old car. So, does that answer your question?
I think so.
Okay. Thank you.
Hey, Tanya, can you think back a time when false information was being circulated about your administration or the district that was causing some significant harm? And really, how did you learn from that, or how did you learn of the false information? Did you choose to refute it, or how did you combat it? And what was the outcome at the end of it?
That is a great question. Yes, so many times, I can't even count, unfortunately, right? And it becomes a beast in and of itself, right? So we had, and, you know, specifically at the high school, we had student helpers in the main office. Typically, we vetted them to make sure that, you know, they were trustworthy, which most time they were. And we had some students with IEPs that we had very specific plans for them when they were, you know, losing control or whatever, and they would come to the office, and that was their safe space to come. And so, and sometimes they would say things that are inappropriate, but they were in a safe space. We supported them. We had our counselors, we had all the things. But in this particular case, I had a student helper over here, one of these students, say something that was highly inappropriate, and put it out on social media. There was this crazy storm, I mean, oh my gosh, like phone calls, and, you know, the district calling, safety teams showing up, and, you know, police, and it was bananas, all because this individual decided to put something out on social media. And so the first thing I had to address, I had to calm the building down. I had to calm our teachers, I had to calm our students down. I leveraged the communication platforms that I had, which were Remind, the PEA. I had an opportunity, you know, when the school day finished, to bring my teachers together and tell them what was going on. I did a dialer to our parents and answered all the phone calls, right? And, and talked to parents and be fully transparent. Obviously, I can't give specific information away about students' private situations, but I assured them that it was being navigated. That's only one example of many. You just have to be consistent, you have to be transparent, and provide as much facts as possible. Obviously, privacy laws, you can't provide, you know, information about students specifically, but you can certainly let people know what's happening, how it's happening, how you're addressing it, what's accurate, what's inaccurate. And it's a, it's a long process, and it doesn't just settle down in one day. Social media, whoo, is something special, and it just keeps things going, and you just have to be consistent about your message.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So after your day in the district, members of the staff, parents, community members were able to fill out evaluations. A common theme that emerged while we were reviewing them for you was your central office experience. Could you share how you believe that you would overcome this concern?
So the concern of having two years in the central office?
Limited, yep.
Right. So I mentioned when I was here for the day in the district, most of what I lean into for my understanding of running an organization comes from my leadership in the building, right? You are essentially managing a mini-city. All the things that go on, it is a very complicated process. However, you do not have the opportunity to have a However, you do not have the opportunity to have a big picture perspective and see how the different components of a district interact, right? That systemic concept, you know, something happens over here and it impacts something else over here. So you can't be myopic at the district level. You have to really understand the big picture and how things interact. So that's what I've learned in the two years that I've been in this position is how all the components of running a school district interact with one another and how important relationships and leveraging resources are to the success of every single school. So that's really been the added layer. But as far as running an organization, it's really that building principle, it was a large high school, large staff, you know, a very close-knit community. And so that was really a huge learning experience for me that I truly enjoyed. The central office was an added bonus. Like I just, I get to see, you know, the big picture, which is, which is fun. Did I answer your question?
So after your day in the district, what do you think is Oxford's biggest asset?
It's people. Oh my gosh, you guys have great people, you know, teachers, principals, oh my gosh, and students are phenomenal. It just, it was such a joy to see even like walk through the cafeteria at the high school. And just see all the kids just interacting at the tables. There wasn't anything, you know, sometimes when you go into a school, there are things that jump out at you and you're like, whoa. There wasn't a single moment, there wasn't a single classroom I went into, there wasn't a single interaction I had that lifted up anything that was like, oh, that's a problem. Like every single person that I talked to was so authentically positive about working here and living here and having their children go here. That is such an amazing resource. Like people are the most important resource that any organization can have and you have great people in this district.
Thanks, we think so too.
Yeah, I bet.
Do you still feel after your day in the district that you're a great fit for this community?
I do. I am very confident that my skills would lend themselves to supporting the district moving forward as one. As I mentioned, it would be extremely hard work. I am under no false pretenses that it would be a piece of cake, but it's a challenge I'm up to and a challenge I think I would thrive in. All right, come on. Okay, final one.
So we've asked you a lot of fairly detailed questions tonight. Now what questions do you have for us?
Excellent, I have three questions.
Okay.
The first is, what are the current two-way communication strategies that are used between the board and the superintendent? And what changes do you think need to be made, if any? And that's to whoever wants to answer it.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I'll turn to the president. So the superintendent, it's, because Vicki is interim obviously, have sent us Friday updates. And occasion, if there's things that are happening in the district, we get direct communication in a timely fashion if it can't reach till Friday. So I think that's more of a one-way. Two-way conversation happens ad hoc, depending on what's happening. We have a lot of committees, so one thing this board has put together is a finance committee, a policy committee, that, that's existed, but the finance committee is new, governance committee. In order to have more dialogue, not only with just the superintendent, but the entire ad team. As we're looking to have changes at the board level, how do we include that so that we were not stepping into a place where we're presuming something that may not be accurate or executable once it gets to the school level when we make a decision? So I don't know if you guys want to add on to that at all or?
We also do the coffee over.
For the general community.
And that is where anyone can come, but there are members of the board and superintendent, so that is also another area that we are able to interact with the superintendent on a monthly basis. And I just want to reiterate that the, the weekly updates are very important to the board, so that is. And we are developing that in governance committee more of a formalized expectation. So by the time the next superintendent comes, there will be a formal document that outlines what we expect.
We also have key communicator groups too, they meet quarterly. So that's with the business owners, realtors, elected officials that serve this region. Pastors.
You know, faith-based people.
Health, healthcare workers, stuff like that. So folks that live or work in Oxford that support the community as a whole, those are quarterly.
Me too, thank you. And as far as board superintendent communications go, I've also been very comfortable sending a text message with a quick question. Giving Vicki a phone call if I just had a quick question about something. And what's been really helpful is when questions come up, whether it's an email or a, or a phone conversation. Our superintendent then replies to all of us because if one of us has a question, most likely more than one of us do. So that's been really helpful to, I've worked with a couple of superintendents, several superintendents in my time here. And it's always been really helpful to be able to make that phone call and have a response. I have spoken with people in other districts whose superintendent rarely responds to communications like that. And I think we've all experienced very comfortable communication, you know, with our superintendent and that's definitely an expectation. Though we wouldn't want a superintendent to be overwhelmed, we also understand that you don't want to get seven phone calls daily with questions, so.
Thank you, appreciate that. Second question is the process of repairing and healing and rebuilding. It involves courageous conversations, which can be uncomfortable. How do you envision partnering with the new superintendent to navigate these situations?
I think, that's a good question.
And Erin will have a good answer.
You know, a lot of what I've learned on my time in the board and the long time I've lived in Oxford and other places is that you have to do it in person. The emails, the dialogue there is not as rich and you don't see the emotion attached to it. So I think it would be something that I, what I would help you navigate if you were to be our superintendent is to encourage as much in-person activity, not phone calls, not debating on emails or stuff like that. Because then you can really get to understanding the human behind whatever it is that they're talking about, that is, they're bringing forward. So that's what I would recommend and to not be afraid to talk to people in this town. Everyone's nice and we're all coming from the same place is what I would say. I very, I don't think I've ever had a bad interaction with someone in the community since I've been on the board. So people are genuinely really kind in this town.
I've noticed.
Even when the conversation is uncomfortable for one person, but it's only uncomfortable because you may be missing a piece of the information.
Yeah, definitely. Thank you, appreciate that. And finally, last question. After getting input and feedback from stakeholders, the new superintendent would need to make some difficult decisions, financial among others. That could be upsetting to some people. What are some ways that you will support the new superintendent in making these tough decisions?
To, yeah.
You can. Well, I'll share some experiences I've had when I was on the board previously and we had to make some tough financial decisions. It's, it's sort of a, obviously it's collaborative and the superintendent has come to the, comes to the board after consulting and working with her, his or her team. And then, you know, it's, there's no surprises. I mean, it kind of is laid out that the board, you know, works in collaboration with the superintendent.
Yes.
So, you know, feel free to add.
I think we have a lot of data. I think that we're, we're really becoming a more data-driven, not, not just society, because everything is tracked and electronic. But I think we're, what, what we're doing in the systems that we have in place have allowed us to become a lot more data-driven. So our, our decisions won't be emotional-based, they'll be data-driven based. And so we'll have, that's a good way to support it.
Yeah.
And, and to collaborate together and get on the same page.
Yeah. And the data also gives the opportunity to say the why.
But it's the why, right?
It's the why, right, right.
It's not in emotion or my kid didn't like that program or, or, you know, whatever. It's, it's just really about, becomes about the facts.
Yeah, thank you.
We have started building the foundation, is what I'll say, with the finance committee is making a five-year projection. So we've started talking about things two years from now already in anticipation and seeing if there's ways that we can either get grants or resources to support things that we find priorities or non-negotiables, we'll call them, that we don't want to lose from our current environment. And then I think also it's going to be engaging the people that it affects the most first. And making sure that they're aware and have their time to input, you know, maybe ideas or spins into it. Instead of it being a top-down, it needs to be kind of a, across the board and once we come together, you know? I think talking about it in years in advance helps a lot.
Yeah.
So there are no surprises.
All right.
Good.
Okay, thank you so much for answering the questions, I appreciate it. Am I off the hot seat now?
You are.
You can even turn your mic off this morning.
Oh, yeah. And we have a, we'll call it twelve-minute recess now in between candidates starting. So the next one will start at six forty-five, so we'll take a break till then.
Great, well, thank you so much for coming back. Again, if you want to stand, you can or you can sit. Erin here has a clicker for you. Well, thank you again for coming back up to Michigan, another different weather day from the last time you were here, I'm sure.
Weather and sunshine.
It's all great.
Well, I appreciate you trying.
Yeah. We'll let you go ahead and start us off this evening and then we'll ask you some questions afterwards.
Sure, sure.
And then you can ask us some questions.
Thirty minutes, right?
Yep.
So I'm going to set my timer here, is it okay?
Yeah.
All right. Starting now. All right, it's running, all right. So thanks again for having me, I really, I really appreciate it. So what you're going to see, okay, I'm sorry, here we go.
So people on TV can hear you.
Are we good now?
Yep.
Okay, testing, one, two, one, two, we good? All right, so what you're going to see here is very similar to the Leadership Transition Plan I shared with you originally. There are a few slight changes because the first time we put it together, it was really based on two forms of data. And that was the, well, actually, it was based on one, one form of data, I guess. It was the H Y A report. So since that time, I've had an opportunity to look at the, I think it's Quality School Survey is the word it's called. As well as the using, utilizing stakeholder feedback that I was able to get from my day in the district. So it's a little bit different. I've also changed, went back to my, my favorite quote, "Leadership is not about being in charge, it's about caring for those in your, in your charge." So this is, this would be my personal, I say personal because I don't believe that as a group that you can go in with a personal mission or vision. I believe it has to be collaborative. But I, I started with personal because I felt like I needed to start somewhere based on the, the conversations that I had with the stakeholders the last time I was here. Based on the, the survey results I was able to, to review and those kind of things. So from a personal missions, from a standpoint, is I would like to develop a collaborative process where school leaders, parents and community members come together regularly, communicate with one another in a civil and constructive manner and think critically to anticipate future needs, future areas of need for the school community and operate in a responsive manner to the current needs of the, of the school community. So again, this, this personal mission was really based off of, of, of data. And like I said, it's three, triangulated, so there would be some qualitative and quantitative data. So I'm hoping that you will, you will see this as we go through the plan, all right? All right, so the purpose of the plan. So I think the task was to create a thirty, sixty, ninety day plan. And I felt like that this really, I really couldn't create a true thirty, sixty, ninety day plan because I wouldn't be in the district for the first thirty days. So my, I wanted to create a plan where I began before actually in the, entered the district. So I've created a Leadership Transition Plan and it's a, but it is broken down into thirty-day increments. And the purpose of this plan is to establish how it hit the ground, looking, listening and learning to build relationships and connect with a variety of stakeholders before addressing key operational tasks. So throughout the first few months, this plan in conjunction with, with other plans like, like the Guide Post and Recovery Plan and other stuff that, that you guys have, that will be used as a guide. So the critical time and attention focused on collecting, analyzing and synthesizing information from stakeholders within and outside the district. This transition plan will also demonstrate my collaborative leadership style and the value I place on allowing stakeholders the opportunity to be heard. So if you've had a chance to look through that, you will see that I place a premium on, on hearing others and allowing others to be heard and in that collaborative leadership style. And as I said, this work would actually begin before my contract of July one. And so I would utilize time of my own and connect with various stakeholders through, through virtual platforms. And the, the purpose of, of, of these meetings would really be to help me to start to, I, I probably get ahead of myself. But really, it's, it's going to be more of, of opportunity for me to get to know people as, 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 as people. And not necessarily the roles that they have in the district. Also, I think it's important to point out that there's, within these activities, there may be stuff that you say, well, we're already doing that. And that's okay because you kind of got me at a, at this disadvantage. I'm thinking about things that I would do, but if there are things that are in place, we just move on and, and, and remove those and then add anything that, that would come up. And like I said, you should, hopefully you'll see some congruency and some connection to data that you've seen in, in the, in the survey results and things that stakeholders have said. So my plan is broken down into three phases. As I said, for phase one would be the pre-entry and that is the looking, listening and learning, developing structure to look at information and data, listen intently to stakeholders and learn comprehensively about Oxford Community Schools and the community to develop a deeper working knowledge and understanding of the district and area of its culture, traditions, history and expectations. And again, that would begin prior to beginning here. Phase two, which would actually be the, the entry, that's leading and collaborating. So again, conducting meetings, interviews with community, having community forums, school visits, designed to build collaborative and trusting relationships with key stakeholders while gathering their insights and perceptions of O C S. And then last would be phase three, the development of next steps, leading and synthesizing, forming the ideas and frame strategies for improvement on information gained from phases one and two. So that's kind of a continuous improvement part there so that we can learn from, from what we, or at least respond to what, what we've learned. So the pre-entry part, I already talked in this, touched on this a little bit, but the pre-entry would be on my time. And that would be, so that would be evenings and weekends. And these would be, you know, where I would take the time to start digging into your, your data and that kind of thing. So let me just kind of read this, I guess. So I refer to this first several days of leadership as my leadership playing as pre-entry because this is the work that will take place before beginning my tenure July one. I do not feel that I can adequately begin leading till I get to know the people of the district and community better. This time will be used to begin the process of looking, listening and learning. Looking at information and data, listening to stakeholders and learning about the district's history, traditions and rituals. Since it will be impossible to be face-to-face with all stakeholders right away, I'll begin by meeting virtually with those in leadership positions. I'll also make myself accessible via virtual platforms, phone or email to any other Oxford stakeholder that would like to connect. And as I said before, the whole purpose of the pre-entry and, and, and having these, this dialogue with virtually would just be to get to know the, the people on the team and get to know what makes them tick. Maybe get, get to know about, you know, their, their lives beyond the work that they do in the, in the school district, okay? Some activities within the phase one of the pre-entry. Writing a letter to introduce myself to the staff and the community. I had originally had this in the phase two, which is the entry, but I thought. I had originally had this in, uh, the phase two, which is the entry, but I thought that it might be a good idea to go ahead and, and, and get my, my face out there and, uh, and introduce myself to folks. The second bullet, create interactive videos so students, families, staff, and community members can put a face with, with a name. That, uh, came out of, I think, one of the, the, uh, Leadership Profile Report, and that was a suggestion from a student. I think it's an, it's an excellent suggestion. Let's see, reviewing any stakeholder survey results that provide insight into perceptions of current climate cultures, I've already done that. I was able to, uh, to pull up the, uh, I think the quality, I, I don't want it, school quality surveys, and I haven't been able to look at that in as much detail as I would like, but I have a pretty good idea, uh, of what, uh, of what folks are saying. And again, you've only got two, two years of data, so there's not a lot of trend data there, but I can look and see over time, uh, what, what those scores look like. Uh, so as you can see there, again, this is basically on my own time, haven't, uh, hit the district yet, what, what can I do while I'm still in Kentucky, finishing up, um, my position where I'm at, but on, like I say, on evenings and weekends, when I have time devoted, I can devote to something else. Uh, again, things like familiarizing myself with Michigan school law, uh, understanding how schools are funded in Michigan, uh, familiarizing myself with, with your policies, procedures, and governance. I'll be honest, five hundred and sixty-two pages, I don't know if I can read that entire thing, but maybe get a little bit more into that, so, so that I have a better idea of what that report says. Uh, getting in more detail into the, the three-year recovery plan, and I want to review academic performance data more than what I already have. Also want to review social emotional learning data, because that's important to the district. Get a little bit deeper into the strategic plan, and as I mentioned before, uh, some of those virtual meetings with the superintendent's cabinet, but also the, the, uh, the admin team as well. And, um, also like to, if, if they're available, I know how, uh, how busy principals are, and how their, 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 uh, time is a, is a premium, but, uh, if, if possible, get to meet those, uh, those folks as, as well. Uh, and again, each, each board member sitting here, just, uh, out of this kind of setting, a more informal setting, so that I can learn more about you and, and learn what your expectations are, and, uh, and that kind of thing. Phase two would be the, uh, the entry. Uh, we see I've got any notes here, that's why I keep looking back here, is I was going through this, uh, just making myself some notes. Um, okay. So this would be the, this would be actually when, uh, from July one, uh, till the end of the, the, the month. Uh, that would be the entry phase. By this time, I should, I've got comprehensive understanding, that may be a little ambitious, have to say comprehensive, but a better understanding of the governance of, of Oxford Community Schools. Uh, I will know the expectations from the board, hopefully know what the expectations from staff, families, and community members. During this phase, I will begin meeting with stakeholders in person, listening to their thoughts, concerns, and ideas while beginning the process of building trusting relationships. And we utilize what I've learned during phase one to inform our leadership for the next thirty days. So this is, uh, well, I, I tell you, let me flip over to the, um... So phase two, this, this would be an opportunity for me to start, once I'm in Oxford, get out in the, in the community and meet those, um, those community leaders, uh, those community members, those influencers, and start building those connections with them, because one of the things that I saw throughout, uh, the data was, or about the surveys, I should say, is this, this interest in town hall meetings, or something like that, one bullet there created a plan for scheduling Gregor Town Hall meetings. That was a suggestion that was, that came out of that report. Um, and so that, that's what the, that's what that would be, is really trying to start those relationships and, and, um, and build those partnerships, and, and start getting the community, um, not that they're not already, like I said, I, I don't know what, what level we're at there, but getting them to, to the point where they're, they're feel welcome in the schools, and they, they feel like they have, uh, value and input. Uh, conversations with school leaders will, will be a little bit more, uh, detailed and intentional, it'll be more around operational processes, expectations, and, and those kinds of things. But, uh, just to give you kind of an idea, let me see where I'm going on time here. Oh, I'm doing good. Um, some, some things that I would like to, first and foremost, as soon as possible, be trained formally in trauma-informed care, as I've mentioned to you guys during my last interview. I, I, I'm familiar with what trauma-informed care is, but in terms of having that detailed, um, training that, that the rest of staff has, uh, has had, I don't, I don't have that. So I'd be interested in trying to get that done right away, so that I can, when I'm having conversations with, with, with folks, and, and I'm offering feedback, or they come to me for, for help, I'll, I'll be equipped to do that. Meet and greets, opportunities, uh, very similar to what we did when, when I was in the district for, for a day. Opportunities for people just to come and, uh, and, and meet me, and, and listen to them, and, uh, and again, just, uh, starting to, to build relationships, and let them see that I'm visible, I'm accessible, I'm, I'm approachable. Uh, I'd like to meet with the Director of Finance, to kind of get a better understanding of, of what the, the financial status of, of the district is, uh, what the budget looks like, where the money is, is budgeted, and, and things of that nature. I, I really enjoy when I, when I do this now in my current district, the civic group meetings, I, I love going to Chamber of Commerce, I love going to Rotary meetings, and so, uh, if possible, I'd like to continue to do that, and, uh, that gives me, not, not only does that give you an opportunity to, to build those relationships with those, those members, but also gives you an opportunity to bring members from the school district, from individual schools, in, into the, uh, into the community, so that they can see what, what we're doing, and, uh, what, you know, the, what's taking place in classrooms, seeing what kids are doing. Attend, uh, cabinet meetings, administrative meetings, like I said, create a plan for what those town hall meetings are going to look like. Um, introduce myself somehow, some way to, to do those legislators that represent Oxford to create that open line of communication, so that we could start having conversations about, uh, issues that might impact Oxford Community Schools, but, you know, public education in general. Let's see. And I like, I like the last bullet there, and just some informal meetings, where I can meet with the, whether it be parents, or, or really whomever, just to kind of sit in an informal setting, listen to their concerns, and, um, um, just make myself available. Some more stuff for phase two. I also would like to, to sit down with, uh, with Gina, I've just got like four bullets there, but, um, talk about, um, I did get her name right, right?
Anita.
Anita. I'm sorry. Well, there you go. There's a strike against me, sorry, Anita. Anita. Uh, but to just review the cognitive data, and so have an idea of what the instructional needs of each school are, um, become familiar with, with the district's instructional process, you know, like if I go into a classroom, what is it that I should expect to see, you know, and, 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 quick example, am I, should I expect to see learning targets on, you know, posted, should I expect to see learning targets, uh, being referenced, um, should I expect to see, uh, uh, um, those learning targets being, there's some kind of assessment, that the assessment's what kids can, um, uh, know and be able to do, so just whatever the, the process is, so I know what that, uh, what that expectation is in the district. Become familiar with the district's formative assessment process, and what goes along with that in terms of feedback and coaching, and then again, gain a deeper understanding of the portrait of, of a graduate and its competencies, maybe go a little deeper with that. And I, I mentioned this before, but, but also, you know, those, those plans are in place, the strategic plan, the three-year recovery plan, and, uh, just monitoring the progress on that, evaluating the progress to see where the district stands. This next bullet, um, one of my favorite groups that I got to visit with when I was here, uh, I guess it was a couple weeks ago, wasn't it last week, was the, uh, the, the student group, and, um, they were very insightful, and had lots of great questions, and some, some, uh, great suggestions, so one of the things I want to make, I have to note is, whether it be the Youth Action Board that, that I saw mentioned in, in, uh, some of the, uh, the reports, or, uh, the group that I saw, the Superintendent, Science, Principal, Student Advisory Council. Because, uh, I mean this with, with the utmost respect, all of our stakeholder groups, but to me, this is, this is one, this is the most important stakeholder group, because all the decisions that are made, they're the ones that, those things happen to, so they, they should, uh, they should have a voice. Uh, and then, again, review the district's certified evaluation plan process, because I believe that, uh, that, that's an opportunity to provide feedback and coaching to help t- uh, teachers get better. And the phase two would, would go from July one through July the thirty-first. So determining next steps, um, this would just be where the, the final thirty days, August first through August thirtieth. Be focused on what the next steps look like for any new initiatives, or as part responded for existing programs. Phase two will also include the creation of operational tasks to help the district achieve the goals of the strategic plan, uh, the recovery plan, and the profile of, of the graduate. I don't, I keep wanting to jump ahead in my seat, because I know it's, I know it's in here. So some of the activities for phase three, I guess I should also add that, I think I mentioned this upfront, that these are just like some proposed activities, some of the stuff you might already be going on, but then, uh, but, um, it's, I, I would also be open to adding, adding any kind of activities that, that you thought that would, uh, that would address, uh, some of the issues. But based on looking, listening, and learning activities for phases one and two, develop a plan for addressing tho- those issues. So in other words, because somebody asked me that, uh, during the, the last time I was here, well, all you talk about is listening, what are you, what are you going to do about that? So here's the thing about listening, you, you either listen to understand, or you listen to respond. This, this whole thing is going to be about, in the first few days of, of, of my tenure, it's going to be listening to understand. It doesn't mean you don't respond to, to things that come up that need to be responded to right away, but I need to understand, and, um, and the only way I can do that is, is, is by, you know, by listening. Collaborate with stakeholders, review, monitoring, evaluation process of both the strategic and recovery plans. Let's see here, I don't have a note here. Now, I, I've noted in myself, that first bullet is about continuous improvement. I would hope that I would be able to get into classrooms, I, I apologize, I haven't looked at the school calendars to see when, when school starts. Would, would we be in full swing by this time?
The end of August, yes.
End of August, okay. So it might be a little soon to be able to really get into classrooms and, and get a feel for the true learning environment, especially when teachers are, uh, creating their, their routines and, and, uh, uh, expectations and things of that nature. But eventually, that's, that's what I like to do, uh, go into classrooms and, uh, get a feel for what, what the learning environment looks like, and when the workplace conditions goes, again, not only, um, are, are we here for, for our students, but we also have to be here for those people that are on the front lines of the trenches, working with those students every day as well. Um, I would, I would love to, if, if the, the leadership team was, uh, was, uh, in agreement, and the board was in agreement, I would love to do a, uh, some kind of a book study. I love, I love reading, I love leadership books, and really, if someone were to say, "Well, what book would you suggest right now?", well, I, I can't, because it, it would be prescriptive, it'd be based on what you deem as your needs, and, and what we come together to say, "This would be a great book to learn about." So, but that is something that, that, uh, that I would enjoy doing. Uh, this, getting, getting those meetings scheduled, and creating focus groups, again, this is, this is about ongoing feedback, making sure, again, making sure as many stakeholder groups are, um, represented as possible, teachers, staff, parents, families, students, middle and high. And the reason I, I had the middle in there, because I think, and I, I saw some students, either they told me this when I was here, or I saw it written somewhere, that some of the high school kids are concerned that the middle school kids don't quite, um, grasp the gravity of, of, of the, the tragedy that took place. So going down another level to have conversations with, 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 uh, with those students, and, and giving them a voice as well, and community leaders. Initial activities for phase three. That first bullet, that, that comes from some data that I saw in the, the Quality School Survey, where, uh, I've got it written down here, but I won't, I won't go back to it and pull it up, but, uh, where, where it talks about, uh, uh, parent, um, feedback being valued and respected, that, that was kind of low, uh, across the board. So trying to give opportunities for, for families to be involved, and not only in their, their learning progress, but the safety and the emotional well-being of their, their children as well. Uh, I, I think for the most part, families feel, feel good, and that, and feel that their kids are safe, but, uh, but just allowing them an opportunity to, to know what's going on. Uh, again, communicate regularly with, with you guys, so that, um, we have that, uh, positive, uh, transparent relationship. To help recruit teachers to the district. Collaborate with the purpose stakeholders, I say that because I don't, I don't know what you have in place, or what the, the title of that person is, but it would, it would be kind of a communications person, I mentioned this when I was here the last time, um, need to front-load all the great things that are going on in this school district, because there are a lot of great things going on. I, I heard that when, when I was here. And, but also what I hear is that those things get overshadowed by, um, a, a few negative things, a few negative people. So how do we do that? We show people the great things going on. So we tell our story, and, uh, promote those successes, and let people know that this is a great place to, to work. And, uh, that's just not worse than what I'm, I'm, my mouth, that, that's, that's been told to me by several, several stakeholders, uh, in this community and district. Uh, this, this next bullet's a tough one. Anytime you're trying to create a two-way, um, communication plan, it's difficult, but being transparent, I think we can certainly do that. It's, it's difficult two-way, because typically, communication goes out, it's very difficult to get that back to, so that it's reciprocal, but we can work on that, we can create a, a way to do that. And again, collaborate with you guys, so that bullet is, so when we look at this transition, look at this, the Leadership Transition Plan, you, you might say, "Well, I like that idea, I don't like that, we need to do this, we need to do that." I'm okay, I don't, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm about growing, I'm about getting better, I'm about doing what's best for the organization. So if we come together and you help me to, to revise that, that's what we, we will do. Then the last bullet is, is critical, because that's about continuous improvement, because just because the Leadership Transition Plan ends at, uh, ninety days or whatever, that doesn't mean we stop, and so we, we have to, you know, then, then, or absolutely, the Leadership Transition Plan might stop, but then we create, based off what we learned, a thirty, sixty, ninety-day plan to get us through the next, uh, three months. And then last but not least, I just want to thank you for allowing me an opportunity to share my plan with you this evening. Four minutes is spared.
I appreciate that. Everyone here knows I like to be on time.
I'll sit now.
Okay.
I can sit, take your time.
Well, we're going to ask you some questions, not a total break, but, um, we'll go ahead and start with Heather.
Hi, thank you, David. Um, if you want to reflect back on where you're at now, or even a job before that, um, describe a time where you, um, worked on an, introduced maybe a new initiative, or were on a team that introduced a new initiative to a district, and how you got funding for it, and kind of how you got it going, and, um...
I, I think the thing that, that, that comes to mind right, right away, um, and it's something I'm very proud of, and I may have mentioned this in my previous interview, and, and I, but I'm okay to talk about it again. Our, um, our preschool, when, uh, when I first began in, in my current district, we, we had, we have two elementary schools, and there was one preschool classroom in, in each of those, those buildings, and they were, they were half-dead. Through, again, because you, you guys can see that I'm really big on, on gathering, uh, feedback, but, but not just gathering it, but using it. And some of the feedback that I got, be, a very similar situation, I did a, a survey, my pre-entry to the job I'm in right now, I did a survey, one of the things that came out was early childhood. Once I got into the district and we decided to, to create a strategic plan, one of the, the, the main big pillars, big rocks, whatever, whatever you want to call it, that came out of that was early childhood. So that we, we knew that we had to devote some time, because that's what the community wanted, that's what, uh, you know, some of our, uh, even, even some of our, our teachers felt like that that was, that was important, to kind of close those gaps before kids, you know, ventured on through their, their educational career. So it's part of the strategic plan, right? Um, and, and this, and this is the- And this is the other thing that's critical, the strategic plan was not just created by me, and it wasn't created by just me and a group of administrators. It was a collaborative process from several people in the community, people that came forth and had input. And if they didn't, you know, not everybody came, but they had the opportunity. So that was the initiative. And so today, that program has grown to a point where I think we have a total of six or seven classrooms, which, so the school has its own principal, has its own support staff, every classroom has an instructional assistant, as well as a certified teacher, certified in preschool. The funding is tricky, we get lots of funding through grants, and so, but the board knew this going in, that we were going to, we were going to get funding and, you know, what was, what we anticipate is, the funding, the grants have always been there, we'll always have to keep applying for them. Wherever those deficiencies are, that's, again, part of the strategic plan where the board says, yes, we're going to approve this, so therefore, where there is a deficit, we're going, you know, it'll come out of general fund. Until a time where, and I don't know about Michigan, but in Kentucky, universal preschool is still not, is still not fully funded, it's not funded at all actually, it's funded based on what the school district wants to do. So that is, that's the funding, that's where it came from, and what I have said here doesn't do that program justice with the impacts it has had on kids and the community. Thank you.
Great example, thank you.
And I'm next. Go ahead and take a, go ahead and take a breath, because it's a short question. Have you ever participated in professional negotiations and what was your role, if so?
Yeah, that's a, and that would be, I think, a strike against me because I'm not familiar with collective bargaining or anything like that. Have I had relationships and worked with, you know, teacher unions? Yes, but in terms of negotiating contracts and things of that nature, I have not.
So what would you do to prepare yourself for those negotiations which will be happening in the next couple of years here in Oxford?
Well, all of a sudden, I'm drawing a blank on names, I can't believe I, you know, I got Anita's name wrong, is it Jim? Is it my?
It's Jim.
It is Jim, all right. So I think one of the first things I do, it's my understanding that Oxford has a really good working relationship with the teachers' union. So I would take advantage of that. And so I would, I would get with Jim and, you know, first and foremost, you know, talk to him about the history in Oxford and, you know, what has gone on there, but I'd probably take it a step further and seek out other superintendents that have that kind of experience and pick their brains to see what, you know, the pros, the cons, the pitfalls, and things of that nature.
Thank you.
Now, do you have experience with managing multi-source foundational allowance, grants, et cetera, budgets? You kind of mentioned some of that, and then how would you approach entering into a district that is facing financial challenges? So kind of...
Yeah, so, and I hope this gets at your question, but yes, so in my role, I work closely with our folks that handle federal grants, Title I, Title II, so on and so forth. So work closely with that and how those funds are allocated, work closely with our finance director. I don't think that I have ever had the privilege of working in a district that was not financially challenged, I think it's just the nature of the beast. I think, I think first and foremost, the way I've handled it in the past is, you know, just very, very conservative approach. And again, that's why I said, you know, creating a strategic plan, like go back and look at the strategic plan of Oxford and see, you know, the things in there that the board has approved, and this is what we want to happen, and those things are sacred, see if we can't, you know, make sure that we fund those. And I think I may have talked about this in my first interview, is that I try to start as far away from what impacts kids as possible. And as cuts are made, they start out here and then you keep coming in till, you know, whether it be a classroom position or something along those lines, but try to stay away from that and just, you know, focus on maybe cutting programs or things of that nature. But my focus is on, in terms of budgeting, is to try to meet the needs of our kids in the best that we, the best that we can, and try to stay away from that. Because here's, I mean, here's what I know, is that you're always going to, you know, face situations where you're going to have to make tough decisions. And my hope is that, and it's always served me well, is that, when I'm talking about tough decisions, I'm talking about in terms of personnel, is that because I've been able to build relationships with people, genuine relationships, that even though they may not like the decision that I had to make in the end, I think they respected it and didn't take it personally. So I hope that answers your question, but if not, feel free to follow up.
So tell us of a time when you've had false information being circulated about either the administration or the district that you're working in, and then how did you learn about the false information? If you had to rebute it or correct it, how did you go about it and what were the results of your efforts?
We, coming out of COVID, we recognized the need for a facilities tax. We are one of the few districts in our state that doesn't have this additional facilities tax, and it's one of those taxes that where the board will, they might approve it, but then it's up for recall. And so one of the things that we really tried to do upfront, I mean, we really tried to be proactive and we tried to think about every way that information could be, you know, misinterpreted or, you know, you know, anything negative. And so we put together, which I felt, and I think it was, because I've had lots of superintendents in the state of Kentucky who saw our plan and appraised us on it for what we did and how we rolled it out, but to educate our public on how schools are funded, where that funding comes from, what you can spend the money on, what you can't spend the money on, and we felt like we did a really good job, and we invested lots of time. At the end of the day, there were still groups of people who were opposed to the tax for whatever reason, and they spread lots of, and sometimes it was political, sometimes it was just, you know, just ignorance, but which spreads misinformation, or take a tiny, you know, nugget of truth and turn it into something that it's totally not. So how we handled that was, we tried to be, we did not stoop to that level. We remained above board, we took the high road, we continued to communicate our message, and we tried as best as we could to take the negative or the misunderstanding information or the misinformation and address that. But it got to a point where all we were doing was chasing our tails because there was more misinformation, you know, that's all we were doing. Then we got away from being proactive and doing what was best for kids and trying to promote something that was good for kids and trying to explain ourselves, which then made it look like we weren't being transparent and we weren't communicating. So that's how we handled that, that's how I would do it again, believing taking the high road. If I had to do that over again, though, I would probably go out and talk face-to-face with some of those people, because at the time, I didn't know who they were, didn't know they existed because they'd never come out to vote unless it's for, you know, recall. But now that I know who those folks are, I'd probably go out and meet with them face-to-face and say, here's what you were saying back when we were trying to get this done, here are the facts, what's some other information I can provide for you? You don't have to vote in our, you know, in our way, but what can I provide to you that when you talk to someone who's not clear on this subject, you'll have the factual information, you can clear it up for them?
So you got, oh, you're next, sorry. So after your day in the district, members of the staff, parents, students, and community members were able to fill out evaluations, and one common theme that emerged while we were reviewing them for you was the discrepancy in district size from where you're coming to where you'll be going. Could you share how you believe that you would overcome this concern?
I can see where that would be a concern to some. I was an assistant superintendent in a district very similar in size to this one, so I do have experience. The role that I played there was very similar to that of a superintendent, it's one of those deals where I, you know, at the end of the day, I wasn't making, you know, the final decision in terms of budget and those kinds of things, but I was still doing a lot of those same things. I, you know, it's, I just believe that, yes, yeah, I have, I'm coming from a smaller district, but the work is the same in terms of what I would have to do. The relationship building, those kind of things, those are the same. And I think that probably what I would do, and I do this anyway where I currently am, you know, I believe in being collaborative, I believe in empowering, I believe in allowing people to lead and creating more leaders. So I know that Oxford has a tremendous leadership team in terms of admin, in terms of cabinet, so, you know, I would rely on those folks and their expertise and their experience and the relationships that they already have with those folks to kind of help me, you know, maybe, you know, make that smaller. But in my eyes, I don't see, I don't, you know, I guess in my mind's eye, I don't see it being that much, that much different. So, but I get the, I get the cause for concern.
So after you got to spend your day here, what do you believe is Oxford's biggest asset and why?
Your people. Your people. Every, I was here for what, 12 hours almost? And every group that I spoke with or listened to, there was a sense of pride in not only the district, but the community. They, it was important to them that I left here knowing what a great place this was and that even though there are some negative folks out in the community, negative things that are said, that they don't represent the majority. So I left here, and this is important to me, because you guys are looking for a superintendent, and I'm looking for a place that I feel connected. I felt that when I left here, and that's why I say, regardless of the size of the district, you either feel that connection or you don't, and I felt it when I left here. So, I mean, you know, your power is your people, and you've got lots of great, lots of great people.
Yes, we do have lots of great people. So you might have already kind of answered it ahead of time, but do you still feel like you're a good fit for our people and our community?
More so now than ever. There, you know, there was a time where, you know, at the end of the last, my last time here, where it felt a little uneasy during, I guess, when I was facing that way. And so I had to kind of step back and ask myself, is this, is this a situation that you want to, you know, put yourself in at this stage of your life? But I'm a reflective person and I don't make decisions, knee-jerk reactions. I like to, I like to take information in, I like to let it kind of percolate, and as I've mentioned, you guys, also, I also believe in prayer and let all that stuff kind of come together. And I hope it's okay to say this, because I don't want to get anyone in trouble, but the correspondence that I received from several folks in the district, emails, text messages, thank you letters sent to my school or my office where I work, then I knew, you know, those were, I knew that these were people that cared, these were people that were demonstrating empathy, these were people that were, you know, these are my kind of people, so.
Great. Okay, I'm last. We have asked you some fairly detailed questions, and now what questions do you have for us?
Yeah, here's seven of you guys, and I don't want you to feel like everybody has to answer these, I mean, a couple of things that I would ask. And, you know, obviously, I have looked at lots of data and talked to lots of people, and so, you know, I have kind of formulated these in my head already, but I'd like to ask you, what do you see as being the biggest challenge for the next superintendent coming into this district?
I'm going to see if someone else jumps before me, if they all look to me.
I can go first.
Sure.
I think it's going to be a lot of work.
Yeah.
It's going to be long days and it's going to be hard work, and at first, it's going to be drinking from a fire hose. And I just don't think, I think the next superintendent isn't going to quite always know what needs to come next, but I'm confident that everything will shake out in time and, you know, the right person will do a great job for us.
It's fair, and I do agree with you that it's going to be like...
And as...
...from a hose, if I can go?
Go ahead.
And as you kind of had mentioned, right, you're going to have to learn to roll with some punches, right? There's going to be some uncomfortable situations, both with communicating with the community, but also, obviously, we're looking at some deficits as far as financially, and so there's going to be some hard conversations on both ends. And you're just going to have to be able to roll with that. If you have to have some thick skin, but empathy and communication is key. I think definitely being transparent goes a long way, and having those one-on-one conversations with people goes a long way. But, yeah, it's going to, it'll be fun.
He says fun.
So, not a dig towards you for being from out of state, but I don't think anybody coming into it can fully realize or rationalize what the last few years have been since the tragedy. You know, reading the guidepost report is a good step, but that doesn't tell you everything, okay? You said it in some of your answers here about face-to-face communication, building those relationships, talking to people, you know, and stuff, and there's many different groups at different levels of their healing and recovery process, all right? Not everybody's there. That's just a small, I don't want to say a small part to undermine it, but that's a big part, but then we still have a district to run, we still have, you know, students that are here, we have new people that are moving into the district, so it's very complex. I would say it's very unique and not something that I think any of us can explain and to try to tell you, okay, a day in the life of a superintendent is going to look like this, but coming into it with eyes wide open, but like listening to you speak and talk about looking and stuff, I think it's a good plan that you have. I just, I don't know, the common thing that I keep hearing from other people is like, they don't understand what it's like to be here in this district, but we have lots of great people in the community, we have lots of great students and staff that all want to work together, but there is some very big challenges, not only from the healing and recovery process, but our financial stuff. So it's, I think, you said it best of, you know, you got put in an easy spot last time sitting the other way answering from the public, that's probably a small... That's probably a small percentage of what day today is going to be. It's going to be a lot more of that. So to fully understand what you're walking into, I mean, it's hard to explain, but it's going to be more of that as well as the rest of, we'll say, school business and operations.
Thank you. No, the other question would have been, you know, what would be your top priority, top priorities, you know, in this, this relationship? But, but, you know, I think I have a pretty good, pretty good idea, a pretty good understanding of where you're coming from.
We appreciate you making the trip up here from Kentucky. And we are done even a few minutes early.
All right.
Thank you for keeping us on time.
You're certainly welcome.
Thank you, Dr. Lynn, for coming back.
My pleasure.
We're going to go ahead and start tonight, having you kick us off with your presentation and then we will follow with some questions from us and then you'll be able to ask us some questions, so.
All right. Good evening, everybody. Thank you for the opportunity. Thanks to those here in person and thank you to those watching from home. I appreciate your time. I know it's been a marathon few sessions and I will do my best to keep you entertained and lively. So I'm just starting my timer out of respect for the directions for 30 minutes. So, good evening once again. My name is Dr. Cormac Lynn. Thank you for the opportunity to be with you again this evening. It's my pleasure to share with you my 90-day plan. I hope everyone had a great spring break. Welcome back. And I appreciate the opportunity for continued dialogue with this group to understand how I may be able to serve the Oxford community. The expectations from the board were pretty clear on this session and so I will do my best to respect that, given the time period allowed. I will forego some of the jargon, some of the buzzwords, in an effort to speak to what the board, I believe, asked for, which is a clear, direct, explicit plan on what I would do over 90 days in the district. And obviously, if we want to have a conversation about some of that other stuff, I'll be happy to do that at a different time. But I will do my best to honor the requests that the board has established for a specific entry plan. So I've used the themes, mission and values that Oxford Schools currently has as the framework for my presentation. Now, every word in each one of those statements, I'm sure, was debated and crafted very intentionally. I don't mean to devalue any of those, but I highlighted a few words that I think are most important for me this evening in my presentation. So obviously, from a vision standpoint, continuing to be world-class and to shape tomorrow's leaders. From a mission standpoint, our primary goal and responsibility is to provide an education to all students to help them reach their maximum potential. And from a value standpoint, especially in the first 90 days, what stood out to me and what I will strive to accomplish is building trust via collaboration and honesty. And that is why I have highlighted those terms for you this evening. So now that I've explained those themes, when I apply them to the 90 days, in some ways I've inverted it, starting at the bottom with values. And really, I say pre-July, and I'll address that in a minute. But I began with values as the base or the foundation of my plan, because without trust, collaboration and honesty, we'll never be effective in supporting or carrying out our mission, or we'll never build an effective and meaningful shared vision for our students and for our community as well as the staff and faculty. So my goal through July would primarily be, and perhaps prior to July 1, to collaborate, to have honest conversations and hopefully to build trust. And so I start with values as the foundation of my plan of really getting to know this district, the members of this district and the community at large. When we transition to August and early September, really with the beginning of the school year, and I say that not the first day of school necessarily, but really looking at when students first begin to return to campus, whether it's the first day of fall sports or band practice or things of that nature. Because we have kids on campus before the first day of school, sometimes unofficially and sometimes officially with the fall start date. So when I think about mission and I think about kids being back on campus and staff being back in the building, in order to support our teachers, our staff, the facilities team, the transportation group, coaches, building leaders, we need to make sure that they feel supported. We need to empower them. I need to empower them and support them in carrying out that mission. And that can mean a lot of different things, depending on what the need is. I mean, there's been times where I've emptied trashcans, where I've mopped things up when a pop was spilled at an event. And ultimately, I think that is my, my job in the short term, especially once staff, faculty and students are back on campus, is supporting them to carry out their mission at the endpoint, at the delivery point. And so that's what I would strive to do in August and early September, is making sure that I'm supporting that mission. So in mid-August, when we return, again, the first few weeks of school, my goal would be to ensure that I am providing the resources and support to the best of my ability to carry out that mission. And this time would be essential for me in gaining a better understanding of the district in terms of how it operates. It's one thing, and it was great to walk through the buildings and it was great to see kids and see teachers and engage. I meet with community members, some who are here tonight, thank you. But it's another thing to kind of see it in reality. And so as the school year starts, that would be an equally important part of my goal during that kind of mission stage, is to really watch the district in operation. And I'll speak to more depth in that shortly. And then finally, vision in September. Only after collaboration and honesty and laying the groundwork of trust and beginning with an understanding of the operational realities of our schools can I begin to build on and to enhance the existing vision for this district. By mid-September, it'd be my goal to have built the necessary foundation to be in a position to begin adding my contributions to the vision for Oxford Community Schools. So I've taken the existing vision, mission and values and tried to apply that to my 90-day plan. I just want to acknowledge some limitations and assumptions that are part of this plan. And so if you're listening or here tonight and you see something in this plan that says that would never work, I'd ask for a little bit of understanding and grace that there are operational realities that I'm not aware of that will impact the plan. So as I transition into more tangible actions, I ask for a little bit of understanding and grace. And this plan is developed, again, as I've referenced previously, with an understanding of the 30-minute cap and I want to be respectful of that. And this plan contains some items that I expect would require board approval. I don't present them with the assumption that they would automatically be approved, but I share them to provide the best example of what I would hope to do in the first 90 days. And in particular, some of the things that I'll address regarding prior to July 1, I recognize may not be able to happen, but it's important for me that I communicate what I would like to be able to do if I'm provided that opportunity. And obviously, I'm prepared to adjust that plan based on conversations with appropriate stakeholders, based on conversation with the board and other appropriate parties. And as I said previously, this plan was developed without a complete understanding of the district and how it operates. And so if I say something that you're a teacher or a building leader in the district and you say you can't get from here to there. I did try to consider geography. I did try to consider start times and things like that. But please, if the opportunity presents itself, feel free to correct me on that down the road. So it's not going to be perfect, but I've done my best. And I understand, like I said, there's going to be limits to what I can do possibly before July, July 1. I recognize that. And I also recognize life happens. And so there's going to be ideas suggested here this evening and something's going to happen. There's going to be a need in a building. There's going to be a need in the community and that schedule, that perfect schedule that I have in my head. It's great on paper. It's another thing to actually apply it. And so I recognize that, right? And I recognize you're going to have to prioritize. I will not read everything on the slide. You have that for your convenience. I want to maximize my time with you. If anyone has questions as we go, please feel free to ask for specifics, but I don't want to bore you and just stare at a slide and read it to you this evening. So I referenced previously my pre-July 1 thoughts in a general sense. And what I would like to be able to do, given my geographic proximity to the district, is use that time between now and July 1 to really begin to do my homework. So when possible, if possible, I'd like to utilize that time to begin engaging with the community. First and foremost, one of the things I would do would just ask to be present at board meetings. I know there's one coming up in a week from today, correct? I believe. Beginning to engage with students and parents at key school events based on guidance from building leaders. I was at a six-year-old basketball game a couple of weeks ago and there was a gentleman sitting across the gym in an Oxford sweatshirt and I, after the game, walked up to him and said, "Sir, do you have kids in the district?" "Yes." Let me introduce myself. You may not know me. But I just had a conversation with him and said, you know, "I'm one of the candidates for the superintendent job. Love your thoughts on the district and can you share with me that he loves the Spanish program?" And his parents were sitting behind me and they said, "Well, can we vote for you?" I'm like, "That's not quite how it works." He's like, "Well, if we could, we would vote for you." So, you know, I just shared that as an example of how I would try to engage and how I have tried to engage members of the community when I see them in a respectful fashion. So meeting with building leaders would be something else that I would try to do after the school year's over, before they go on break. I want to respect their time. They worked very hard during the school year. But to have the opportunity to speak to them before they leave for summer, while some of those challenges or successes are fresh in their minds still, I think would be really helpful for me as I go into the next stages of this plan. And I recognize they have things they have to get done at the end of the year. They have agreements of when they're going to be in the building and when they're not. And the board might say, "No, you're not an employee yet. We don't want you to do that." So again, I recognize there are possible limitations. Meeting with the board, one-on-one, to really understand as a member of the board, which your vision is for the next school year, what your hopes and dreams and concerns are so that as we continue to collaborate moving forward, I can keep those things in mind. And again, having that opportunity to learn in April, May and June would just position me to be that much better prepared, effective July 1 if I'm provided with that opportunity. Continuing with the community theme, you know, engaging with various community organizations, being present, making those connections with those community groups that support our schools and support our students. Talking to local officials, whether it's, you know, township or elected officials. And I know there's a connection in Oxford Schools with one of our elected officials, which would be a nice bonus there to really have that understanding and have that direct connection. And then outside of just engagement with people, really sitting down intentionally and reviewing some of the key documents that drive the work that this district is attempting to do. And I've referenced some of those on there for you. So those are some of the things that I would like to do in April, May and June, you know, assuming that that opportunity is provided and assuming that the board is comfortable with those ideas. So effective July 1, you know, as I've referenced previously, my approach would begin with values. And those values would support the mission. I referenced trust, integrity and collaboration or honesty earlier. So moving to July, a more structured plan could be implemented. This person would be an official employee at that time. But I would continue with those values of collaboration, honesty and trust that I referenced previously. My priorities would be community engagement, learning about the various departments, and I say learning very intentionally, learning about the various departments that enable the district to operate and reviewing some of the data and current norms that help the district operate and achieve its goal of providing, you know, a world-class education. That can happen in a lot of different ways. And I have some examples for you on that sheet. And really, it's just July essentially is primarily about learning. And when I talk about July, what I want to learn about primarily is people, partnerships and programs. So if you want to think about those three Ps, people, partnerships and programs, I want to understand the people that serve, work, attend this district and those that support the district, those key partnerships that allow this district to flourish. And when Todd was kind enough to be my host on the day in district, you know, we had a lot of conversations about many of the community groups that are supporting our school. And I would want to definitely reach out, use those connections that Todd and others in the district have to begin to introduce myself, understand the impact that those community groups have on our schools and really understand how we can leverage those relationships and try to enhance the service that they provide. So obviously, meeting parents, students, staff, faculty, community members is key. I recognize July is a busy time. People are on vacation. Some people are available, some people are not. So I would take advantage of those who are available. How they want to meet, the fashion in which they want to meet, I'm very flexible on that. It could be in person, it could be virtual. I'll speak to some of that a little bit later. As I referenced previously, understanding the programs that are in place, making sure that we can maximize that impact. What I would work to do primarily in terms of that engagement, one of the first things I would want to do, whether it's to the district or whether it's to community partners, and I've included some sample letters in the close of my document that I will not address this evening, but just send a letter of introduction very directly to those individuals, introduce myself, invite them or ask them for an opportunity to sit down. I don't necessarily want a cold call. I will, but I'd rather have some premise for that conversation and let them begin to think about what I need to know, what they want to share with me and what they want to or need to better understand about me or the district. So I would want to send a letter of introduction. If it's to the community, you know, I would have some very intentional processes through which I would reach out to community members and engage with them. Public meetings and gatherings, that can happen in a number of different forms, whether it's through the district, whether that's through things like Rotary, whether that's through, you know, Chamber of Commerce. There's a lot of different opportunities where I would look to get in front of various community members. I've also included in my packet a sample of a calendar that I built when those groups meet to make sure that I can try to keep an eye on that and be engaged where and when possible. And then as I referenced previously, I'm sure either in an interview or with meetings with various stakeholders, my primary preference would be to meet individually, one-on-one, have very direct and honest conversations to build that trust. And why July is so important is that how we are able to engage in July and what unfolds in July will be impacted by the work I could potentially do in April, May and June and then would set the stage for really supporting that mission in August. So when I talk about July, a couple priorities, I call it departmental learning. And I want to apologize to Business Operations and Technology Group. When I was fine-tuning the aesthetics of the slide, those groups got missed. So I apologize. It's not personal, I promise. But my goal would really be to look, what are the immediate needs? You know, we're beginning to plan really intentionally for that return to school. So what are those immediate needs? What are the strengths in each one of those departments? And what are the opportunities for improvement? And I've attempted very intentionally to create a sequence of the departments in which I would want to have that review, you know, starting, as I think I referenced in their first interview, really Maslow's hierarchy of needs, right? Do our staff and students feel safe? Do we have the supports in place that we need for our students? Do we have the teachers, support staff, bus drivers, maintenance staff? Are they ready to go? Are our buildings and physical plant ready to go? Okay, now can we get kids to school? Once they're in school and we talk about the learning, are we prepared for that? So curriculum instruction, special ed, athletics and the visual performing arts. And then, not that nutrition and communications are not important, but big picture, that's a sequence that I would propose to use when looking at this departmental learning period of my, of my plan. And again, I say learning intentionally because it's about understanding how these groups operate. Then it's taking that understanding and using mid-August to mid-September to really evaluate in a fair way or better understand the intent, the objectives, the goals of these departments, how it impacts the end user, our students and families. And then that would transition into, into the mission. So we're still focused on really building those relationships and building understanding, but that understanding serves as the foundation for serving mission and being able to put people first. So when I think about July and early August, I've built a tentative schedule. Now, the slots where there is, quote, "nothing going on," well, that's where work happens in theory. But I've created essentially three different versions of a calendar that hopefully allow me to meet with essential stakeholders, cabinet daily out of the gate, just really to have that daily pulse of what's going on in the district, what do we need, what do I need to learn? How can I understand how our district operates? So that would be first. Doesn't always have to be first in the day, but that would be a priority for me because I will say in conversations with some people, they were very complimentary of the cabinet members and stressed that they were a strong group. And so I would definitely rely on them to help me learn and I would definitely do that in that first month. Want to make sure that in our communication, if there's a topic, as I go out and engage with the community, hey, you might hear about this from this cabinet member, or hey, this might come up. I want to make sure that we are informed collectively and that I can be informed when I engage with community members to demonstrate to the community that we are kind of in unison, we have a clear lines of communication. And my general rule, hopefully, is no surprises. And so if we can avoid that, everybody wins. So starting with the cabinet, the community and stakeholder engagement will vary. It might be walking through downtown. It might be formal meetings. It might be office hours. And so I propose having office hours, and I've had success with this in the past, just setting up kind of a, whatever platform you guys might use where people can just sign up and book a 25-minute session, right? Just give me about four or five hours notice. Just give me about four or five hours notice, put your name, give me a sentence, you know, I'll do my homework of what's the connection to the school, come in and have a conversation, right? And that way, you know that time's available, I know that time's available, if it's booked, you have that time. If it's not, well, then I'll take that time to do some emails or otherwise. So, there are different ways to do that, and I'm trying to provide venues that people will be happy and comfortable in. I would like to do in July, one last thing, is make 10 phone calls a day to a single building dispersed across grades, just to kind of get a sense from parents in a building what that looks like. During this time period, would also include conversations with union representatives, and I know the collective bargaining agreements are up at the end of this year, and so those would be included kind of in that community group, community stakeholder engagement as well. So, as we move into August, September, we now transition to mission, as I referenced previously, really making sure that we're supporting our teachers, our cafeteria staff, our bus drivers, those who are our most direct touch point with our students and parents, to make sure that they're ready to go. Values remain important, but now mission moves to the center. The overall goal in this phase would be to build a deep working understanding of the operation of the district, make sure that we're prepared to return to school, and see the district in action, as I referenced previously. I would want to be present at school events, I'd want to establish office hours at individual schools, and I'll reference that specifically in a minute. So, just briefly, again, that August, early September, I want to work to review policy and procedure, and make sure that we have a clear understanding of what that is as a district and at building level. I would want to make sure I had the opportunity to engage with staff, whether that's returning staff or new staff, I'd love to do something with those new staff, a tour of the district, let's all get on a bus, let's go drive around, see the schools, things of that nature. I would like to recognize those staff members who are beginning, what I'll call anniversary years of service, in five-year increments, you know, I think that's significant, we want to recognize that service both at the beginning of the year and at the end of the year. I would want to use cabinet meetings to make sure that essential functions related to schools are operating at a high level. I'd want to engage with staff at PD days, I know there's a district day and there's individual building days, so outside of that district day, you know, what might be a building that would be most helpful for me? You know, is there some time in an elementary building, a little bit of time at the middle school, a little bit of time at the high school, or that might be also some of our other programs, like Bridges in particular, or even the virtual program. So, I'd want to be present in buildings once school starts, to learn and observe, and perhaps even shadow principals, and just spend some time in classrooms. And so, what that might look like a little bit, could be something like this, and again, I provided three examples of what that looks like. Cabinet meetings now would slow a little bit in the pace, because I should have a firm understanding, we should have that communication in place, and that might happen two to three times a week, or as needed. The review would move from kind of major department levels to just learning, to more analytical, more intentional review, more evaluation-based, and just the shift from learning to a more specific intentional, direct question, learning, answer, and really looking at the operation. I have dedicated time in each building, that could be for meetings with students, meetings with staff, I've tried to be intentional, I'll show you a first week of school calendar in a minute, about time at each building, either at arrival or at dismissal, and also before school, during lunch, or after school, to possibly meet with students or student groups. And then, obviously, with extracurriculars underway, there's going to be an event or two, or three, or four every night, so there'd be no shortage of opportunity to go out and engage with students and families in that capacity. So, this is the first week of school, I presented a calendar as to how I would like to be present in each building, and as I referenced previously, every building that's a traditional in-person learning environment should have a chance for me to be there at pickup and drop-off, sometimes during lunch. So, that would allow, if a parent wants to stop by and say hello, they're dropping a kid off in their car, I can open doors, hold umbrellas, pick up dropped lunchboxes, maybe things of that nature, but just to really be intentional and be present in each building. I did use geographic proximity to try to be as efficient as possible, and I believe Bridges is going to be a new location next year, so that might have to change a little bit, and the early college partners might require a little bit of fine-tuning there. And I would go to crossroads, they start on the 19th, I believe, before everyone else comes back, so I'd be there first. And so, when we talk about September, we now transition, we've gone through values, we've gone through mission, this is mid-September, we're moving towards vision. So, really, having gone through those first two steps, having a better understanding, really seeing the mission as it's carried out in the district, I would shift focus to now different subgroups. So, I've had individual meetings, I've had community meetings, those can continue, but the focus would now be to bring groups together to refine and enhance our vision, based on collaboration. So, principal meetings, department chairs, or learning area coordinators, or subject area coordinators, union representatives. So, now we begin to drill down a little bit deeper. I would want to begin to understand and identify the goals that are in place for the 24, 25 school year, and make sure that I'm in a position to support them. It appears as though the strategic plan may be due for an update, so I'd want to have those conversations with those groups, to make sure that their voice is present very early on in that conversation regarding the strategic plan. I would produce a summary document of the 90 days and provide that to the community, and the things that I've learned, and my observations and takeaways, and my hopes and goals moving forward. Definitely, given our first conversation and the expiration of some funding coming up, make sure we do a budget review, make sure that we continue to be on track to get where we need to be regarding budget, and then just begin some early conversation about, what do we need to do for our teachers next year? I'm sure, next year being '25, '26, as '24, '25 is pretty much set at this point, and then just continue to operate and support the mission on a daily basis. So, in summary, you know, the goals would be, as I referenced previously, July is about learning, it's about collaboration, trust, and honesty, originating from the values of the district. I understand that my first 90 days and beyond will be busy, and the plan is subject to modifications. It's also a great opportunity to support our students, our families and staff, and learn about the district, and learn about the district so I can support the mission. I hope to support the values and mission and vision by being present, by listening, by reflecting, and following up, and I would fully expect a lot of very intentional, very important, significant questions that I may not have the answer to during that conversation. And my obligation is to do my homework and do my due diligence and follow up, and sometimes that follow-up may be, I don't have an answer for you right now, but I want to let you know that I've done some work, I've made some progress, and that I will follow up with you on or before or by a certain date, that I'm not just hanging, leaving you out there to dry, I need to do my work. So, while I move through this plan, obviously, being present, keeping the school board, the school community updated, I would like to put out an update once a week to the community, this is what happened this week, this is what I learned this week, these are the takeaways, this is what I'm looking forward to next week. That would include a reminder of the schedule for the next week, if there's open office hours, that might include, there's still some time left if you'd like to sign up. And those office hours, I understand people are busy, if they want to do it virtually, that's totally fine with me, you want to make a phone call, that's fine, you want to come in, come in. So, if a parent's at work and they can carve out 25 minutes from their desk, totally fine with that. So, I'm flexible into how those office hours are carried out. So, I want to keep the board and the community updated, the staff and faculty as well. The format of those communications would really be a reflection on, hopefully, the feedback that I would get from that initial outreach to the community, what is your preferred means of communication? Might be some video communication, some traditional letters, there might be, you know, it's X now, not Twitter, but, you know, things of that nature. When I talked with the high school students, I asked their recommendation, they said Instagram, so if they like Instagram, okay, I can do that. So, making sure that I'm reaching out and communicating in a way that reaches as many of our stakeholders as possible, in a way that they're likely to engage, because it's not enough to say, well, we put it out. Well, if we know or we believe that certain groups aren't utilizing those resources, then that's the equivalent of not putting it out. So, I want to make sure that we are communicating in a way that will reach our community. And most importantly, in those first 90 days, you know, being present, as I said, listening, reflecting, following up, and learning, those would drive my first 90 days for me, and I would just ask the board, if you haven't already, to take a minute at your convenience to review kind of the sample documents that I've included in there. I won't take time this evening to go over them, but I just include those to try to provide some context of some of the communication that might go out, it's very brief and very short. But that is kind of my 90-day plan, I appreciate your time, thank you for your time this evening, I hope that my plan provided some insights as to how I would approach embedding myself in the district, and I appreciate the opportunity to learn more about the district and be considered for this opportunity. So, thank you, I'll turn it over for questions.
Thank you.
With one minute to spare.
Good job. Well, thank you. Start with Heather. Cormac, if you could describe a time, and it could be at a building level, or while you've been superintendent, that you initiated or collaborated with a team to initiate a new initiative, so something new that came, something you guys developed, how you got funding for it, you know?
So, the example that comes to mind first, and thank you for the question, is we are in the midst of a diocesan or district-wide initiative to enhance our schools, and that includes the formation of a school council, that includes creating new policy, that includes getting, intentionally getting stakeholders from across all the schools that are represented within our system, teachers are involved in that, principals are involved in that, parents are involved in that. So, we've created the school committee that has various subcommittees, marketing enrollment, academic excellence, there's a religious component, and a financial vitality component, and so we're really looking at the operation of all of our schools and how we can support them. That funding comes from a mix of diocesan funds, we've gotten grants from credit unions, we've gotten grants from a charity foundation in Mid-Michigan, I've created through that opportunities to recognize excellence in teaching, I've created an opportunity for administrative internships to try to foster future school leaders, I've also created through this group, you know, curriculum goals that we're working towards. The challenge for us is that we have schools in 10 different districts, so we can't be a one-size-fits-all. So, we try to build a balance between what do we all think is important, and honor that we recognize our students will likely be matriculating to a different school system, so allowing that local flexibility to do what they do as best, feel as best. But that council is seven to nine people on the council, there's four subcommittees, I'd say roughly eight to 10 people per. We meet as a council probably every two or three months, I chair the People and Governance Committee, so we've talked about some policy development to create expectations for home and school, for principals, for athletic boosters. That was probably the biggest thing that we've done, and a big part of that has been really trying to provide some clear direction of what a healthy school looks like financially, you know, what's the cost to educate, where is your funding coming from? And that's about a year and a half or so in the making, and we just had our planning day in March, and it was great when we sat down, and, you know, I'll say, my boss was there, and we did a little, this is what we've done in the last year, and he said, well, I didn't know we'd done all that. I'm like, as long as you like it, then great. So, we're very intentional, we put out communications a few times a year to help all of our community, whether they're school parents or not, understand what's happening in our schools, to make sure that they see the great things that are happening, and if they want to support that, that they have an opportunity to do so. So, I think that would probably be the most prevalent example, if not for COVID, right? I mean, COVID, the whole return to learn, I had, again, a health group, a mental wellness group, an academic group, a facilities group, I would say 60-plus people broken down into various subcommittees, we met virtually, because we were all still virtual at that time, so those would probably be the two big examples that stand out.
Thank you. And I'm next. Thank you again for coming tonight, thank you for the presentation. Have you ever participated in professional negotiations?
No, I wouldn't say, and how I would interpret your question, like collective bargaining, no, all of our employees are at-will. Now, I think I referenced this previously, you know, at least at Orchard Lake St. Mary's, everyone had a one-year contract, so every year, here's a contract, let's talk about it, if you have questions, comments, concerns, but there is no collective bargaining, no one is a contracted employee, they're all at-will employees.
So, what would you, how would you approach, how would you prepare for the professional negotiations we'll be having, you know, in the next couple of years here?
Yeah, so I appreciate that question. You know, I have a friend from childhood, actually, that is friends with your UNISERV director, and so I've made an attempt to reach out to him, just to introduce myself, that would be one thing. Obviously, starting with the relationship with the members of the cabinet that are involved in that process, and reaching out to those union presidents locally, to make sure that we have that relationship, and that we're being very honest and direct. Using my other resources, my father-in-law is a retired UAW local union president, and so I would definitely leverage that. And I do have relationships with various public school superintendents, as two of the schools that I serve are in large leagues that have public schools, and I'm on the executive committee of one of those groups, and we run that league essentially from the superintendent position. So, I'm comfortable that, given the relationships I've built over the last now six years, there'd be some resources that I could turn to, and I'm not opposed, I talked about learning, I'm not opposed to doing my homework and making sure that I engage in learning opportunities to better understand that process, whether that's through a formal, you know, plan of action, or just, you know, engaging in some one-on-one direct kind of learning and/or mentoring to better understand that process.
Now, you touched on this a little bit, on the initiative, but do you have experience in managing multi-sourced foundational allowance, grants, et cetera, in budgets?
So, we have a budget for our office, we have a budget for each schools, we don't necessarily operate day-to-day supervision of the school budgets, but as I alluded to, when we talk about financial vitality, one of the things that we are doing and offering is going out to our schools and walking through their budgets with their finance council, with their building leaders, and we've created some norms, as I referenced previously, in terms of what a healthy school looks like. I did serve as the president of two of our schools simultaneously while being superintendent, the bylaws just state if that seat's empty, the superintendent takes that role, so serving on those governing boards, or with those governing boards, with that finance committee, looking at the budget, having to go before the diocesan finance committee to talk about certain projects, certain plans, to get continued support, and we've definitely had conversations about what budgets can look like, what they need to look like, and managing that, I mean, at Orchard Lake St. Mary's, yes, day-to-day operation of the budget was definitely part of that process, and I think you talked about various grant funds and other sources of revenue. Most of that comes through grants that we'll apply for, I referenced previously, the safety grant that I've gotten for one of our schools, we have funding pretty much annually that comes through a Mid-Michigan Charities Foundation that we had, that are competitive, that we have to apply for, it's not a guarantee that we're going to get it. So, wherein those opportunities exist, we, or I, or all encourage people to apply for them, and obviously, we don't have tax dollars, but we have tuition dollars, and really recognizing that revenue stream, what that enrollment looks like, in this case, what that full-time enrollment looks like, and the state aid. So, I think there's some similarities, the language might be a little bit different, but I think there's some similarities in how budgets operate. Now, again, the level of state funding is going to be a little bit different, but I think, given my experience as an independent, you know, school leader, working with diocesan CFO, working with business managers and bookkeepers at our individual schools, really sitting down and going through that budget, and working with our financial vitality committee, that's a part of our strategic plan, has been a part of my learning and will continue to be, so it's definitely a part of the responsibilities that I have currently and have had in the past.
And that kind of segues, I guess, a little bit, but how would you approach entering into a district that is facing financial challenges?
So, I had some conversation with people about that, and definitely understanding, as I alluded to earlier, like, what are their priorities, what do we have to retain, what are, for lack of a better word, perhaps seen as non-negotiables, and why are they seen that way? How do we evaluate and analyze the impact of a program, or a system, or whatever that thing, that widget, might be, and really, you know, working kind of backwards, all right? Does this academic support mean a lot to the teachers? What does that mean for our students? How do we see that impacting growth? Are our reading levels up because we had this intervention? Are our math scores getting better? Are we seeing attendance get better because of this plan and program? So, really being data-driven on that, and people are passionate about programs that they started or that they brought to the district, that's not to take away from that, but trying to make it more objective and say, what does But trying to make it more objective and say, what does the data tell us? And then, we'll have to prioritize which is most important. So, when I had that conversation, want to understand the human side of that budget, right? Because every decision is going to impact somebody. And so, really understanding that human side, then looking at the, some might call it cold mathematical side of it, and looking at the impact and looking at those three factors, using that holistically to make a decision in the context of the larger operation of the district and what is in the best interest of our students. And those would be some of the criteria that I would use to make some of those decisions. And again, in my own experience, our schools don't charge nearly what it costs to educate. And so, every year, we know we're not going to, in most cases, you're not going to bring enough tuition to cover the cost to educate. So, you are constantly mindful of that and being very intentional in your budget conversations, in your staffing conversations, and really prioritizing where you spend that last dollar. And so, I think that's a part of any good evaluation of the school system, being very intentional. And then, the second part of that is not just making that decision, but then having the necessary follow-up communication to say, here's why we're doing this. This is the process that we used. Here's how we arrived at this end result. And equally important, here are the people that we consulted along the way. Because it can be easy if you just make that decision. People might make some assumptions. And so, it's about making sure you're clear in communicating the process that you used and being transparent about it. And also, accepting that someone's not going to like that decision, no matter what. And that's why it's so important that you're able to communicate clearly why that decision was made and how you arrived at that decision.
So, that kind of segues into my next question, or I get the luxury of asking this next question. Could you tell us of a time when false information was being circulated about your administration or the district or your schools that was causing significant harm? And really, kind of emphasize more of like, how did you find about the false information? Did you choose to refute it or correct it? How did that go? And then, how was the end results of it?
So, I'd say first, one of the challenges as a school, as a school system or entity, is I think that our burden of care is so high because we're dealing with kids. And one of the biggest challenges that I think schools face is in their intent and desire and responsibility to protect kids. They cannot or will not share certain things that the public may want to know to protect a child or those children. And that becomes challenging because that's perceived as withholding information. And the public citizen, within reason, can say or share anything he or she wants. And it may not necessarily be true. So, my approach in terms of sharing sensitive information and responding to claims, right? I'm always going to start with what is our first obligation to our students to creating the best environment for them. Starting with that, what can we legally share? And what will be the benefit or lack thereof of responding to certain statements, inquiries, demands, fill in the blank? And making sure that when we release something, we're very intentional on what it says, very deliberate with the word choice. And that may include, you know, a statement of, "I recognize or we recognize that there are many unanswered questions. And due to the nature of the ongoing investigation, we're unable to make further statement at this time." Or, "Due to the fact that this is a human resource decision or action, we're unable to make further comment at this time." Now, behind that, I will try to reach out to those people who perhaps might be most vocal. I may not have more to share, but I at least want to try to make that connection with them. I want to try to make sure that I'm understanding what those concerns are. So, when there's been false information about administration, I'm trying to think of an example. I mean, I guess luckily, I haven't had anything significant that immediately stands out. There's been more with students where parents or students believe a student did X, Y, or Z. And that may or may not be the case. So, it's really about, again, respecting that minor and what we can or can't share. And that includes the rest of the students, right? It's not just about the student or person in question, if you will, but it's about everybody else. About being very intentional. And that's why your communication norms are so important, right? What can we share? How will we share it? How often are we going to share it? And some of that can ultimately result in, we've shared everything we can at this time. Again, as I said, we recognize there are many questions. And it's our commitment to the community that if and when relevant information becomes available, we will share it with you immediately. So, just being consistent, being intentional. And we had a threat in January where we were told by police, and I'm sorry if I shared this before, "Don't say anything." Well, then a reporter went to the police and the police shared information. And then, we looked like we were withholding information and people were upset. And so, we had a conversation with families and said, you know, we were told, directed not to share things. And again, we're dealing with a kid or kids here. I'm always going to use caution when we're talking about students. These aren't adults. These are kids. And our burden of care, I think, is higher when we're dealing with kids. And I'm always going to err on the side of caution, especially with minors, especially with kids. And people want to know, what happened? What did the child do or not do? Well, I heard this, well, I heard that. Well, I will only talk to you about your child in discipline matters, nor would I talk with anybody else about your child. So, I would ask for that respect as a parent and that we're doing our best to protect all children, if that answers a question.
Okay, so after your day in the district, members of the staff, parents, community members, were able to fill out evaluations. And a common theme with yours that emerged was your public education experience.
Okay.
Could you share how you believe that you would overcome this concern?
Sure. So, that definitely came up, and that's a fair comment. I think serving kids and creating a great learning environment is more similar than different. I think good teaching is good teaching, whether you're in first grade, fifth grade, ninth grade, 12th grade. Now, that mode might be different. But whether you're in a charter school, public school, a non-public school, I think there's a lot of similarities in why people get into education. Yes, there's some unique missions around each one of those modes of school. So, I would lead with that. I think that, and I think I shared this before, I think there are more similarities than differences in the students and families that non-public schools serve, at least I'll speak from my experience. In our schools currently that I serve and the schools historically that I've worked in, we have students from across the socioeconomic spectrum. We have students who are Catholic and not Catholic. We have a student population as reflective of the demographics of our society. And we're called to serve our community. And one of the things that I'm proud of in my history in the schools that I've worked with is none of the schools have been under the mantra of, "You have to have a score of X on a placement test to be here." That's never been the approach. And so, we try to serve all students. Now, there's a recognition that we don't have some of the resources that some students need. That's not to say that we don't want to or that we don't try, but there's some operational limitations there. But I think that being a good administrator, working with students, working with families, supporting educators, supporting principals, I think those core operational responsibilities are very similar. And the building in which you do those things might be different. But that, those responsibilities are more similar than different. There'd be some, you know, rules, you know, school code things that I haven't had to necessarily address. I think that would be the biggest challenge and the biggest thing that I would have to learn more about in similar to the budget discussion. If that means I need to do some very intentional learning, then I'm open to that. I'm not coming here today saying I have all the answers or that I know everything. Again, using my resources, I mentioned my friend from childhood. He teaches in Wayne Westland. My sister-in-law is a public school teacher in Grand Blanc. My wife is a former public school teacher. Again, the resources that I've built through my career in the last six years, working with public school districts across mid-Michigan, leveraging those relationships and being honest and recognizing I have to learn. And if I don't know something, okay, then help me with that, right? And that's where members of the board, members of the cabinet, teachers, educators, parents, right? It's a collective team effort, and let's be a part of that team effort.
So, after your day in the district, what do you believe is Oxford's biggest asset and why?
I shared this previously, but I think what struck me and what encouraged me to apply for this opportunity was really the vast range of opportunities that students and families in this district have. You know, I keep thinking about the auto tech. And there was like, what, four or five lists in there? I mean, that looked like a dealership, right? I'm not a mechanic by any means. You know, I also was struck by walking into the gym. I think it was the middle school. And there was like eight simultaneous games of badminton going on. And I said, "How many classes is this?" "Three." I'm like, "Okay." You know, again, the virtual academy, the dance conservatory. There is clearly a desire to serve all students. I was in an elementary building where a young man was spending some time in a room, you know, supervised and monitored, throwing a pillow against the wall, because that's what he needed to do at that time. So, it's clear to me that there's a desire to provide, you know, a pathway, as I think the vision, to help students reach their full potential. So, that's one of the things that struck me, was just that desire to provide so many opportunities across various grade levels in different buildings and really try to provide opportunities that allow students to make that choice that's best for them individually. And that's one of my, I said it before, one of my core beliefs. There's the right school or the right environment for every kid. And I think what Oxford provides in spades is a lot of options and a lot of range for students to find what works for them. The early college is another example. Whatever you want your post-secondary, within reason, it appears that whatever your post-secondary plans may be in the short-term and long-term future, there's a path to get there via Oxford. And so, from a school system, that's a great offering. So, that's what stood out to me. That's what struck me a little bit. Also, you know, walking around the buildings, meeting teachers and kids. People were happy to be here, right? People were in a good mood. Now, again, we all have good days and bad days. And, you know, not every kid made eye contact walking down the hall. We don't make eye contact with everybody every day either. You know, I remember being in the middle school and thinking as classes were changing, like, all right, kids, they just do their thing, right? It was a structured, appropriate environment. You know, wasn't, kids running down the hall? I'm like, oh, I got to go take care of this. Like, people were happy. People were pleasant. People knew what was expected of them. People were meeting the needs of the students, you know, at the high school. I think about Deja and the students that she encountered and how she was able to speak to individual things about many of the students that they had experienced recently or they had accomplished. So, it was clear to me that for her, that student engagement was so important. Being in the middle school with Mr. Bigelow and his doctor's, is that Sproul? Is it? Okay, just pulled that one out. You know, knowing some kids, oh, that's the story behind that kid and that's the story behind that kid. And so, it's clear that they've built relationships with students. And they've built that relationship to best serve them and to value them as a human being, so that they will see that value when they come to school, they'll know they're important, and there'll be one more reason to be in school that next day. So, I think, I think that's what probably stood out to me reflecting on the day.
So, reflecting on that and our questions, you still feel that this is a good fit for you to move forward in your career?
Again, based on what I've heard, what gives me confidence, right? As I stated previously, Dr. Markovich spoke highly about the cabinet. So, when she said to me, and she said, "I could disclose this conversation, so I'm not breaking any confidence." When she said to me, you know, "If I was younger, this job wouldn't be open. I just don't have the energy I did when I was 65." It's like, okay, I hope I'm at that point in 65. But when she said that, you know, that gives me confidence that knowing and recognizing that I have learning to do, that there's a strong group that I can work with and lean on, number one, right? I referenced this previously, knowing that many of the administrators have been in the district for a significant period of time. Hearing from staff during my day in the district of, you know, how long they've been here, what they've done, you know, there is a strong structure in place. And so, I don't get the impression, there's always room for growth and improvement, but I don't get the impression that there's a need to overhaul the district. That doesn't mean there is an opportunity for growth and improvement, like I said. But I get the sense that there is a strong foundation in place at many, many levels that would provide me with that opportunity to learn, with that opportunity to grow. I think that, given my experience, again, in the last six years, working with multiple buildings, working with multiple systems, multiple principals, multiple communities who sometimes are very different. I have two schools that are 15 minutes apart, but it's like the Hatchetts and the McCoys. So, trying to navigate that a little bit. Being out in the community a little bit more in the last six years, networking across not just educational groups, but other professional groups and community groups. So, I think that I'm positioned to be able to serve this district and help, as I started with previously, you know, help those who are our last touch point carry out that mission. That's what I feel my job is primarily in my current role, is to support those building leaders, right? And make sure they have what they need and to develop that policy to help craft and hone that mission and vision with input from those stakeholders. And I think that no matter what, whatever the role is previously to coming into a new district, there's always learning, no matter where you're coming from. I think all of the candidates, all of the three finalists for this position have very different experiences, coming from three different states. So, I think that we're all going to have our own unique challenges. I don't think mine are any significantly, I can't speak for them. But we all have our own unique challenges, and our responsibility is to recognize those challenges and opportunities for growth.
Okay, last question. We have asked you some fairly detailed questions tonight. What questions do you have for us?
Oh, that was a softball question. You gave her an easy question. It's a question.
It's because I'm the senior member.
Well, again, I appreciate the time. I appreciate the opportunity. I appreciate the feedback that people provided through the QR code. It's the first time I've seen my face on a QR code, so. And I recognize that there will be people that look at me and say I have room for growth. And that's true, and I look forward to working with them hopefully to do that. In terms of the board, that includes you as well. So, my first question for the board is, what is your ideal level of fund equity? Yeah. What do you like to keep, you know, where do you want to be? Where are you currently? And then, I have a follow-up question on that.
Our fund balance?
Yep.
14%?
Yeah, I think we're at about 14.
We don't want to go too low.
Okay. So, this came up last time and again this evening. We know that there's some reduction in funding coming up over the next couple of years. Does that reality change that 14% target from a fund equity balance?
It may, yeah. As we look at, you know, as we look at our five-year plan and we're moving forward through it and what are, you know, priorities, what we perceive as our non-negotiables and why, as you mentioned, and what things need to be accomplished around the district and our enrollment, right? We did have a demography study done. There are subdivisions being built in Oxford still. So, there's things that are still happening. But the reality is, if we have to dip lower, we do. But there is penalties at a certain point by the state, right? So, we have to be very cautious that if you get too close to that threshold, we don't want to be thrown across it, right? So, having a little bit of cushion is a good space to have.
Sure.
Do I have a target number? No. Because we don't want to give up our 14%.
Understand. Yeah. And historically, it's been, it's been like, what, 14, 16%? I think if my memory is correct.
Yeah, we were at 16% for several years.
And that's pretty strong from what I've seen.
So, that was nice and strong.
So, we've done well.
And I think the opportunity there, you know, this shared time program, I know there's a 10% cap growth per year, but the virtual program, right? And I think that's where, in my experience, you know, in terms of building enrollment and marketing and really being intentional about and marketing, and really being intentional about, not being shy about promoting the opportunities that you have, I think that's something that really needs to be a focus, because that is a way that you can grow some enrollment, not necessarily from the, the district. I know that Oxford, as I said previously, works with one of our schools through Shared Time. I was an early adopter of Shared Time, but those are two opportunities that I think really can provide perhaps some of that cushion. And so, that's definitely something that I would be interested in really diving into, and making sure that we're doing our job to, to promote those opportunities for those in our surrounding communities that might be interested. What are the top three objectives for the school board for next year?
We have a governance committee that's working through a lot of that right now. We do, yeah, hire a superintendent.
Okay, top four, top four.
You know, for the school board, so let's just say, the school board, not looking into the district, but at this level. We know that this election year will at least yield one new position. And this district's gone through a lot between COVID and the tragedy, and how do we get a new member up to speed as quickly as possible, you know? And so, setting some expectations, you know, for those running, and then for onboarding, so that way they can come up to speed as quickly as possible, and be effective leader in our community. Go ahead.
I'm just going to add, policy, we need to further develop that, whether we're switching or not, that's on the table right now, so that will be a, a big thing that we are looking at this, this coming year, whether we keep our current service provider or move to another one, but either way, everything around, surrounding that, as far as implementation and training and, and all of that.
Okay.
That is just a huge aspect coming up.
We also have a focus on board development, about building our capacity and, and learning how to work together. Again, we're going to have at least one new board member, we have some new board members coming in this year, and we understand the value of a cohesive board and the board superintendent relationship, and how valuable that is to the district. And so, that is also part of our focus, is our own development.
And I think that's something, you know, again, working with various boards, some governing, some advisory, some of those same challenges, building a productive, effective board, onboarding new board members, working directly with, with boards and with board chairs, and one of my letters of recommendation speaks to that directly. So, yeah, that's, that's, that's essential, that's essential. I appreciate that. Anything else to add on that question from anybody? All right. What are you most proud of accomplishing this year as a board?
Getting to the stage of interviews.
And selection.
And selection at that point. I would have to say, honestly, you know, the majority of us up here are brand-new board members, right? And so, there was a steep learning curve, but I think we've started off this year, you know, with a strong finance committee looking at our five-year lookout, and being proactive and having the discussion, so we can get the feedback on how do we, you know, have a tug-and-pull of the resources, and understanding, you know, what our non-negotiables are at the, at the, you know, impact to students and teachers and staff. And our governance committee, our policy committee, I want to say, as a board, we started off much stronger this calendar year, starting by laying the foundation that these, these would be priorities for us in focusing into this year. So, that way, not only do our new board members next year have a good standoff, but our new superintendent has a board that's focused, and not all over the place.
Laying a foundation.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think that's what we've been working on.
Okay. Appreciate, appreciate that effort. It's not, it's not easy to try to begin that again, so. Outside of the budget constraints upcoming, currently and upcoming, what do you feel are the greatest needs for the district at this time? Needs or concerns?
I can kind of start off. I do think communication is an area that we have opportunity to improve. I know it's a great desire of all of us, and it seems that we start getting a cadence, and then we trip, and then we get a cadence, and then we trip. And so, getting that into a cadence that doesn't trip, you know, I think is important. And like you had mentioned, talking about what our students want to receive in terms of communication, and how we want to receive them as parents, and maybe how community members need to receive it, and just really evaluating the different stakeholders and how they receive communication, because I think it's due, it's time due. And I do think the next superintendent, I know it's a desire of mine, and I think many of the people up here, is, our strategic plan was developed before COVID, before a tragedy. And it's, it's a really great time to look at it with a new superintendent, and re-engage all the stakeholders of our community, to re-establish what is the strategic goals of Oxford Community Schools, so that way they reflect the reality that's here today.
Yeah.
I'd like to add on to that, communication piece too, is how we are, how we are gathering feedback. And I think we have room for improvement on the way that we, that we gather feedback from all of our stakeholders.
Is that a board-specific process, or are you talking about district-wide?
Well, I'm just, I guess I'm talking about district-wide, because we, I'm just, I'm trying to think how to put this. I, I just don't know that we have the right tools across the district for gathering information back. As a, as a, as a board, I mean, we have, we do get some emails, but we don't get a lot of regular feedback on a, yeah, on a regular basis.
I think what Mary's trying to say, and something the governance committee is working on, is our presentations from our schools, you know, what are their priorities, and what is the data that aligns with them, so that way we can match the two together. We know the data's being collected, we know that people are acting on that data, but it, it's not as transparent as we would like it.
You mentioned data a little bit, and what do the board, what does a board feel are the most important or most frequently used measurements of student growth? And that might feed into that question that you just brought up.
Yeah, you know, again, I think we look at a lot of different things, and the priority over the last couple of years has shifted what we've looked at, you know, from, you know, how do kids feel safe, how do our families feel safe? And we've focused, there is focus on achievement, because the state requires us to do that, and we do get that feedback on what that looks like, you know, under the, I think it's the 98C, or there's the letters that go with all the budget pieces, right?
Do you have an acronym list? Maybe that's in the communications. We have that for our committee, right? The acronym page.
They do, they come and they present them, but what, yeah. So, there are lots of measurements that are occurring, but I think the focus the last couple of years, in terms of what's been reported out publicly versus just showing up on the dashboard for my Michigan School data, has been surrounding our recovery efforts.
Okay. Thank you. Last question for me. What does the board foresee the superintendent evaluation process looking like going forward?
Oh, you're so lucky, we just did training on this.
All right. Hey, that's my softball toss to you. You're welcome.
Okay.
Yep.
We all just went through training. Some of us have been through training several times, but now everyone's been trained, so we use that as a rubric, and it's, you know, it's a pretty standardized, it's, I'm sure you've seen it.
Yep.
So, that's what we've been using here for several, several years, and it's, it's a good rubric, it gives you an opportunity to provide evidence, and obviously, you know, ratings and comments, and you can't make a lot of adjustments, but you can, you can at least add notes and things like that, so.
Sure.
And evidence, so.
Familiar with that.
I think the cadence of them will be quarterly, though, in terms of
Okay.
the feedback sessions, it won't, it won't be an entire year between an evaluation. There'll be quarterly touchpoints throughout, in goal-setting, of course, as part of that.
This was something we just discussed in governance committee as well, to add, because some of us had not been trained on that prior to last, it was a special circumstance, obviously, with the interim.
Understood.
But we are going to, moving forward, have a more regularly scheduled training, and we talked about possibly using different providers for that, you know, M A S B does one, and we can look at others, just so that we're not getting complacent, and you are getting timely feedback, as well as an opportunity to address things with us. And so, that is going to look different than it has in the past, but in a good way.
Okay. Any other questions for me? I appreciate the time. Everybody at home, thank you. Guests, colleagues, potential colleagues, educational colleagues at a minimum. So, I appreciate it. Thank you for the opportunity, thank you for your time this evening. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Going back to the meeting, so we can wrap it up for the evening. Thank you for everybody who stayed with us. I know that was a long day. Going through the superintendent search, you know, that was fun. That's what I will say. One of the things that the, the board would like to do is site visits to the candidate's home districts, in order to see, you know, how they interface with individuals that they work with on a day-to-day, and some of the priorities that they have in that. So, is anybody opposed to that?
No, I'd like to do that.
Yep. Okay. I would like to get them done as quickly as possible. Of course, I know that means time away from our own priorities and our personal lives, but what we'll do is, we'll have Kelly and Vicky, probably Kelly, schedule some, see what days people are available, so. I'm comfortable moving forward with seeing all three districts, if you guys are.
I am too.
Yeah.
I am as well.
Yes. All right. Well, that's, that's the measure then. Okay. Kelly?
I think you guys, oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
I was just going to say, I did site visits the last time we did a superintendent search, and I will tell you, it was the, the most insightful. I, I thought that the interviews had been the most insightful, and references, and plans, and all this, and when I went on-site, it was, it was the most insightful. So, if you, if you, you know, everybody should at least maybe try and do one.
Okay. We'll see how we can break it up based on their school district schedules, because I think some are on spring break now, some are, may have other things that are coming up. So, Kelly, we'll see if she can get some dates for us from those districts, and see if we can make it work.
And then how are we going to provide feedback to everybody? How do you, how, how do you want that set up?
Maybe H Y A can do something with the portal or something for us.
Where we write up a summary, and they post it on the portal or something like that?
Yeah, I'm just trying to process a little bit.
Yeah, because our next board meeting's the 9th, and I don't think we'll get all three of them done in the next four business days. So, what I would say is by the 23rd, because that's the day that we have to decide, or we choose to call a special meeting ahead of that, and so, those will be the
Okay.
I would like to see us call a special meeting, if, if we
Just for superintendent search.
If we can get it all done, that in, that week in between.
All right, well, let's get the dates for the site visit first, and then we'll publish a special meeting as soon as we have those dates.
Mm-hmm.
Does that sound good?
Yep, and we'll ask H Y I, H Y A how we can
Yep.
share that information.
Okay. All right. Anything else on the superintendent search case? All right. Number six on the agenda is unscheduled public comment. We have none. Any final board comments? I appreciate everybody who helped us with tonight. That was all, it was a lot of work to get them all here. All right.
I do have a comment.
Sure.
I do want to thank the candidates all for coming back and traveling, and I, I just have to shout out for our high school robotics team, 2137, who did have, who did earn enough points by their, by their last competition last weekend to qualify for the state finals with their robot on points. But what happened last weekend at Detroit II event was that they won the first impact award, formerly the chairman's award with first, which is the highest award that they give out. It's about the sustainability and the overall, it's, it's an overall award, it actually has nothing to do with the robot. It is a team award for, for what the team has done over a long period of time, so they will be competing for that at the state championship this weekend at Saginaw Valley State University.
That's awesome. All right. 9:08, meeting adjourned.